Call to order for the Watertown City Council meeting for March 20th of 2023. Please rise while Jen Tyler, the pastor of your First United, or United Methodist Church, First United Methodist, okay, thanks. So Jen, please lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. God, we thank you for bringing us all together here today. We thank you for a community that cares so deeply about the issues that our city and wider community face. We ask that you will let your presence be one of peace and of, of, of listening ears as we gather this day, and that you would guide us as we do all the work that is before us this and every day. Amen.
Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay, Bueller, absent. Danforth?
Here.
Paulson?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. Just a note for everyone, Councilman Bueller is likely to be joining us later online, and we will wait for that to happen. So quorum is established. With that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with one change. We are going to pull item F, and we are going to move it to the first item on the regular agenda. So with pulling item F from consent, putting it on regular agenda, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Councilman Paulson, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Any discussion on that? Councilman?
Can I recuse myself?
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. I may have to recuse myself from item F when it's on the, on the regular agenda because I'm on the Board of Directors for that nonprofit.
Okay. All right. We have a motion of, or notice of recusal. With that, motion is to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now is the time for public comments. If anyone is here who would like to speak upon something that is not on tonight's council agenda, now is your time to do so. Councilman Vilhauer?
Thank you, Mayor. See, I'd just like to, to have us keep the, the husband Greg McDonald of former councilwoman Beth Manti in your thoughts and prayers. Greg suffered a stroke Friday evening. He's home, he's doing well, but very sudden, fortunately in the right place at the right time as far as getting assistance. So anyway, keep Greg and Beth in your prayers.
And I will say, I was there, and our first responders for the city of Watertown did an excellent job showing up very fast and administering all the care. So any public comments? Okay, I will close public comment. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Vilhauer. Any discussion on that? Councilman Vilhauer?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed there's two, two items that we had first readings last meeting. Our city council procedures and our curb space reservations would have normally been a second reading time, I'm guessing, because of the length of the agenda as it is. We'll address those next time.
Correct. They'll be on the April 3rd agenda.
Okay. We will go with that. So any discussion, any further discussion on the regular agenda? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the regular agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I do believe we've got a couple chairs over there, and I will allow some flexibility. We have to, we have to allow passage in and out this door, and also that door, but other than that, you can get creative with where you're sitting a little bit. And I do have the air conditioning on, and I apologize for my voice. I'm just fighting a little bit of a head cold that comes from walking in the St. Patrick's Day parade. So first item on tonight's agenda will be item F from the consent agenda, an approval of $15,000 donation to Watertown Cares. I guess I will go to Sarah Faust for more information on this. Or City Manager?
Thank you.
Just identify yourself first.
I am the welfare director for Cottington County. I'm also a board member for the Watertown Cares, which is a new nonprofit that we've established for emergency housing here in Watertown. We're in the process of purchasing, Watertown Cares, the nonprofit, is in the process of purchasing 612 flats. In order to receive the funding, the funding that we're receiving is through South Dakota Housing Authority, and that's the funding to purchase a property. They're also providing some of the funding for our staffing. However, the funding for the staffing will be, will have to submit for that funding and receive it later. We also have some establishing costs and things like that, as can be expected with a new nonprofit. And so we have reached out to the county, the city, Prairie Lakes Healthcare Foundation, or not the foundation, the healthcare system itself, and the Watertown Community Foundation, asking for equal contribution from all four of those. We have received funding from the county and confirmation from Prairie Lakes that they have each, are contributing 15,000. The Watertown Community Foundation, I believe, is meeting this week. And so this is a request to the city to support this effort, to support all members of our community with our housing, shelter, like for emergency housing. Dan is also part of the board for the Watertown Cares, as well as Brenda with the, the county. And so if you have any questions, that's what we're requesting.
All right. Thank you very much. For further information, we will go to our City Manager, Amanda Mack.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. You may remember that the city contributed dollars maybe about this time last year towards strategic planning for all of our entities that work in this, in this realm, social services realm. We think it's, you know, a worthwhile endeavor. The request didn't come to us during the normal budget time. That's why it's coming to you separately from the other agencies that, that we normally give to, and it would just take a, a budget amendment to approve.
Thank you very much. Any further proponent testimony? Any opponent testimony? Chair will entertain a motion to approve the donation. Motion made by Councilman Vilhauer, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Any more conversation on that? Councilman Tupper?
Sarah, can you tell everybody more about the, what is it, 602 flats or 601? I'm aware of it, but I'm sure there's a lot of people in the audience that, that aren't aware of what that facility is.
Yes, and, and as a reminder, this did directly come out of our strategic planning process as we identified a need for emergency housing in our community as we have none right now. So at a really amazing meeting, which included the mayor, Eric with Crestone Properties, and a lot of other great people in our community, there was discussion about funding that was available. We were able to get a one-time funding opportunity through South Dakota Housing to purchase 612 flats. What that's going to provide is eight individual units for individuals or families to stay in that have no permanent shelter, and will also provide case management services to both get them housed and continue to provide support after they're housed, so that they can hopefully get out of the cycle of poverty and become contributing members of our community. That's the ultimate goal.
Thank you. Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and just to reiterate a couple things, it's, some cities or communities have what they would call a, just a shelter, you know, for overnight stay. This does not fall into that category. It's a transitional type of housing for who knows how many weeks, few weeks, handful of weeks to, to help get the next step going into, 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 just, yeah, for housing for, for long-term. So I just wanted to make sure that's, because sometimes there's confusion on housing, emergency shelter, what that looks like. So, all right, thank you.
Bruce, we're acknowledging your presence.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, just a couple questions in regards to the service that, that this will be providing. Dan answered some of it, that it's a transitional housing, but, so how is this service obtained? So if somebody has a need, how do they go about getting in contact with you? First question. From a transitional standpoint, you know, is there a, in a timeframe allowance? You know, what happens if that drags on and on? What, what happens in that scenario?
Yeah, those are both great questions. One, we have hired an executive director for Watertown Cares, and so he will be the primary contact for our trans, our emergency housing, transitional housing. And so anyone in the community that contacts any of our agencies for emergency housing would be directed to contact Watertown Cares or 612 Flats for that option. So that would be, we would funnel everything to him to determine if they qualify and they meet criteria. There are going to be criteria for things. And then as the second part of your question was like, kind of the, how long they can stay, that, those types of logistics of it. So, I mean, we have some things already in our policy, like this is not, you can't have, it's not, not, no alcohol, no drugs on site, any of those kinds of things. Our intention is that we'll meet people where they're at and work with them. As long as they're working to meet the requirements to become permanently housed, we will continue to provide services to them. We know because we have a housing shortage that we can't put, like a, you have two weeks to find housing, because they might find housing, but it might take them another month to actually get into that housing. And so as long as they're doing the work that they need to, to become permanently housed, they'll be able to remain there.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Sarah, just one thing. This would be a leading question if ever there was one, but one of the things that I particularly like about this is it is in the best long-term interest of the taxpayers of Watertown because of the success results that come for these people who are in need. So, but could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So I don't think people realize the number of people that we have that don't have permanent housing in our community. In the month of December, which this was an unusual month, but it just demonstrates our need, we had 27 people in 27 days come through our doors at the county welfare office that did not have permanent housing. So it's definitely a need. And any research that you look at will show that continuing to provide support for homeless people is much more expensive than getting them housed and providing them support so that they can become contributing members of our society. And so that's really the ultimate goal, is that we can save our community money in the long run by having people be safely housed and have the support that they need to become employed or functioning members of our community.
Yeah, and it's also a good deal for our jails and
Absolutely.
prisons, because we keep people away from recidivating.
Right.
If that's a term.
Yes.
All right. Any further comments? Councilman Tupper?
So Sarah, with this program, you can kind of look at it more of a, instead of a hands-out, it's a hands-up type program.
That's our goal. That's our goal, is that we're not giving anybody free rein. We're just helping them get the support that they need to be successful.
It's a proven fact that a lot of those people, and there's always going to be some that, irregardless of what we do, are going to slip through the cracks. But my hat's off to you and the, and the whole organization for, for looking out for these people, because they are people. So, thank you.
Right, right. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Motion is to approve the donation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're onto item A on the regular agenda, Presentation of an Annual Report from the First District Association of Local Governments. We'll pass it off to their Director, Todd Kays. I always forget how to say the last name. I apologize, Todd.
That's fine. Good, good evening, everyone. It's that time of the year when I like to take the opportunity to meet with our counties and our larger municipalities, just to kind of go over some of the work activities that has been going on within the First Planning District over the last year. And so for some of us, it's just kind of, and for the public, it's just a little bit of understanding of who we are and what it is that we do. So the First District is one of six regional planning and development districts located here in South Dakota. We represent 11 counties and 76 municipalities in northeastern South Dakota, from Roberts to Moody Minor and back up to Clark. We've been around since 1971. We're not government, but we're creatures of government. We were created by Governor Frank Farrar through executive order under what's called a joint powers agreement. And the 11 counties and 76 municipalities that we work in here, we look at things from a regional perspective, trying to make sure that all of the boats are floating together in, in, in the right direction and going in, or is going in the right direction. As far as how we are governed, we have a 35-member governing body. That board meets a couple times a year. They set the policy for our office. They set the, the work plan. They approve our budget. They hire the Director on an annual basis. And currently Myron Johnson is the County Commissioner Rep., Glenn Vilhauer is the Municipal Rep., and Michelle Kacacek is the at-large Rep. We also have the Chairman of the Flanders Santee Sioux and Assistant Wapin Tribe. As far as how we are funded on any given year, we have generally three streams of income that comes into our organization. Every community with a population over 100 in every county pays those dues, and those dues represent on the average about 20% of our operating revenues. We leverage those dollars against other state and federal grants, and we also do some state and federal contract work, which is about another 21%, 22% of our operating revenue. But everything else that comes in is a fee-for-service work. And our fee-for-service activities are done less than what you would find in the private sector, and that's just due to the power of the collective, of the organization. We have currently 14 individuals working here in the office with about 180 years of experience. Some of us are getting a little long in the tooth. I'll be celebrating my 30th anniversary in May. Didn't see that in 1993. But our, we have a core group of individuals that work in a variety of specialty areas. Two individuals currently work in grant writing and grant administration. We have four individuals that work in the areas of geographic information system and support services. Three individuals working in planning and zoning and strategic planning. We also have the First District Development Company, which is our sister organization with four employees. That basically works on the private side of the ledger. They are a small business administration certified development company, so we're working with private lenders and taking subordinated positions on loans to private individuals and private businesses here in the district. As far as some of the things that we, we do, we're really known for doing application packaging, funding projects. Communities and counties that are constantly trying to reinvest in themselves are looking for outside assistance from state and federal entities, and we are that conduit to many of those programs. If they do get projects funded, then we usually help out and work on the backend. And with all that free money, there's a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross. When it comes to planning and research, it's what I've spent most of my political, most of my career working in the politics of, of policy development and policy implementation, specifically in, in land use planning and zoning. We also do a lot of different special services. We work in tax increment financing, involving loan funds, geographic information systems, and the like. And they're out there slepping the state and federal programs. As far as some of the success stories here in the last fiscal year, our office was able to assist our membership in obtaining $409 million in grants and loan monies for various water and sewer and community development projects. Most of those dollars came to us through the, the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. $147 million just in grant dollars into the area, which is, which is kind of crazy number. Since 2008, since I've been the Director, we've only had about $241 million in grants. So the $147 million came just in this last year alone. But generally, when we take a look at the return on investment of dues versus those outside federal state dollars coming into our organization, in the last 15 years, it's been averaging about $65 for every dollar's worth of dues. In Cottington County, this last year, we experienced about $21.2 million in just grants coming into the district here in Cottington County for a return on investment of about $370, about $46 per dollar of a dues since 2008. And in Watertown, if we go back, we had $21.2 million in Cottington County, but Watertown received the lion's share of those grant dollars, so about, close to 20 million, 19.97 million. Those grants over the years have equated to about $23.5 million for water and sewer and community development and park and recreation programs and trails and a lot of different things that our office has been involved with. It's not that we have the money, and we know the, the closets that you have to knock on, and where the, the doors that you have to get into, and, and we understand the programs and the, the things that have to be done to you, assist in the grant preparation and the administration. So we're just there to act as that conduit between the funders and your projects. I wanted to just talk about, there's four little handouts I gave you. One was the PowerPoint presentation. Another one is just this sheet, this kind of a, a two pager on different types of activities that we do here at, at the First District and office services that we provide. I've always said that we'll try anything once, and, and if, if we're good at it, we'll keep doing it. If we're not so good, we'll find somebody that can do it better and, and cheaper for our membership. The other thing I wanted to quickly go over with you is a handout that has some highlights on it. And this just basically talks about some of the activities that we've been working on over the course of the last fiscal year. And when it comes to the city of Watertown, we've been very much joined at the hip, at least for the 30 years I've been involved, and, and the 20-odd years before that as well. But Luke Muller in our office works with staff a lot on a variety of planning issues. Luke is also the Cottington County Zoning Officer, so he acts as the conduit between both the city and the county on various land development issues. We maintain a wide variety of GIS databases for the city. We web-host GIS data for the city, and then we're out there just doing a lot of grant applications, especially in this last year. I'll highlight a couple that are really, I think were kind of big. Working with the Watertown Development Company, we were able to assist the city to obtain $1.1 million for the Calvin Industrial Park Improvement Projects. Worked with the Watertown Lions here in this last year to receive a $71,000 grant for playground equipment that's going to be at the new Lions Park. We've also worked with the Solid Waste Department on a earlier grant last January already, a year ago, on solid waste grant applications. And then, of course, between Watertown Municipal Utilities and the City of Watertown Water Department, there was just rain and money as far as coming from the feds. I feel sorry for my children and their children and what that's going to do to them over time. But we've been working with Watertown Municipal Utility Department, the sanitary sewer improvements, there's going to be some clarifier projects and cell, the plant improvements with the, the city. And once those funds have now been allocated to the city, we are going through the, the process of getting those projects rolling. We'll be assisting the, the city in the, the administration of those dollars. The nice thing about that is with our relationship with the state of South Dakota, we're able to provide those administration services at no cost, because the state entrusts our ability to do those work activities, and the state pays us for that. And so the very last handout, I don't have it here on the slides, but it's just basically a listing of projects over the last 15 years in all the communities in Cottington County and the city of Watertown, and different things that we've been doing. We've appreciated the working relationship with the city of Watertown over my 30 years and, you know, 52 years that we've been in business as well. We look forward to another good year working with you. We're here all the time just to provide any service that you might need. All you have to do is ask, and that's, that's really the, the long and the short of it. It's kind of the same spiel that you hear from me every year. Nothing much has changed, other than the names and the faces somewhat. And I'd be more than glad to take on any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilman Vilhauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple, just a couple of comments. You know, quite often, sit up here, we, we allocate money, we spend money, and it's, it's hard to see a return in our investment at times. We hope it's being well-spent, or well-be, and being handled prudently. Well, this is a case where, without a doubt, the dollars that we return and the numbers that Todd has in his slides here pointed out. So great, great involvement, great investment with our work with the First District. And also, I don't, not to say that we take advantage of it, but we are so blessed to have the First District office right here in Watertown compared to some of the communities and counties. I know you, you, you'll probably defer that comment, Todd. I do know that's, it's very important to have that office here in Watertown.
Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had the pleasure of working with Todd and his team for quite a while now, and I just wanted to thank them for all that they do, because they're constantly busy. And they're, Watertown's not the only area they saw, they serve, as you saw in the, his presentation. And they do a lot of great things for Watertown and this surrounding area. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
To your team.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You bet.
Item B on the agenda is an application for a transfer of a retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license and video lottery license from Lower Incorporated to 81 Quick Stop. We'll go to our Finance Officer, Kristen Bobzine, for more information.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, this is just a transfer of ownership, no location change. Notice was given, and all fees have been paid, so everything's in order. If there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain, Chair will open a public hearing on this. Is there anyone who would like to testify in favor of this? Anyone would like to testify against? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Do I have a motion to approve the application? Motion made by Councilman Paulson, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Any question, any conversation on this council? With that, the, the motion is to approve the transfer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item C is an approval of a bid award for the 2023 pavement rehabilitation, crack sealing, and seal coating project to Asphalt Preservation Company Incorporated in the amount of four, roughly $400,000. We'll go to our City Engineer, Justin Peterson, for more information.
Thank you, Mayor. This agenda item, on March 8th, we received four bids for the crack and seal coating project. The low bid was for Asphalt Preservation Company in the amount of $401,790, which was 16% lower than the engineer's estimate. Staff recommends approval. And just kind of a note that we plan on, since the bids were so good, adding additional funds as a change order in the future. So, outstanding for questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Paulson. Questions or comments, council? Councilman Vilhauer? Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I see in your write-up here that we had a budget of $450,000 plus $20,000 from the airport. So we have $470,000, so you would just add up, I'm guessing, to that. And it looks like we got three bids. Is that, there's one other one listed, and it's blank, so I don't, but it looks like the bids came in really well, from what I can see. What, what areas would you plan to add, I guess, is just a quick question?
The specifics haven't been, been set, set up yet. There's kind of a, an ongoing list of streets that we know need, need attention. And so just continue through the list as, as much as we can to get to that budget amounts, the plan.
Any follow-up, Councilman? Councilman Vilhauer?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I posed this question to staff last week, not necessarily on this, but it was actually on Millan Overland and Major Repair Project. This, this isn't necessarily set in stone, is it, Justin? I mean, as, as a street, you know, deteriorates this spring, I mean, we're, we're seeing it on an ongoing basis. I mean, this can fluctuate as far as where we might either add or move dollars. Is that a fair statement, Justin?
Yes, that, that is.
Okay. So if you've got something identified out there, because I pointed out a couple of streets that were, that weren't on the list, that hopefully get some attention. So nice we have some flexibility, the way it sounds. Thank you.
Councilman Tupper?
City Engineer Peterson, how many, with the extra dollars, how many extra blocks do you think you could do with that, roughly? Or don't have that figured? It's an unfair question.
I don't have that figured. There's, it really depends on the amount of cracks on the particular street, so.
Okay. Councilman Paulson? Is there actually, Councilman, I'm going to go to Councilmen who haven't spoken first. Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. So when you, when you look at which projects to do, which streets to do, is this taken from that survey that we do every five years or so, that study? Is that going to help us, guide us down the direction, which roads to, to go down? It's not just sort of like who yells the loudest, right? There's kind of a, a system to it?
There is a system, and we do, we do utilize that, that report for, for these projects as we set them up.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. Justin, you'd mentioned that we would probably look to, to add distance or road distance, whatever, in order to use up the budgeted amount. Would that, my question on that is, is, my impression is, is that that would be within the crack sealing and, and seal coating area. But what if we have other areas which are your, your major road construction or your, where they would grind it and, and repay? If those come over budget, aren't we possibly better off moving those dollars from this topic to maybe use in those areas to get accomplished what we want? It's not, in other words, it's not, is it absolutely fixed to the seal crack and seal coating versus potentially used other areas of street maintenance?
There is some flexibility to There is some flexibility to, to shift from, from one rehab method to another. So, in those situations, we have that flexibility. That's a short answer.
And that's something that we would be looking at, is where best to spend those dollars versus automatically just up, upping the quantity of the seal crack, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
City manager, Mac, has something to add?
Thank you, Councilman Danforth. Just to add to that, any change order would come to the council and would have a recommendation on, you know, if we're going to add that to the Millen overlay or keep it within the crack ceiling. So, that'll get vetted out as these projects continue to get bid and as we assess road conditions as the snow eventually melts.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, since there's so many people in the room, that this is the worst time of year, that goes without saying, four potholes appearing. I did see our street department out there today working really hard on a few intersections, which is great to see. But be patient, they are working hard. This is a time of year where it's very hard to fix streets as they're putting cold mix in their, in the potholes. But our crews are working extremely hard, but streets just blow up in the spring because of our freeze thaw cycles here. So, just be patient. This is just one of the rehabs we do, but I just wanted to point that out, especially because there's so many people in the room.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item D is an approval of a bid award for the 2023 miscellaneous concrete improvements project to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of roughly $219,000. City engineer, Justin Peterson, please tell us more.
On March 9th, the city received one bid from Dunick Inc. for the miscellaneous concrete project. It came in quite a bit higher than the engineer's estimate, at 6% higher, and the staff recommends rejecting these bids. I'll stand by for questions.
Is there a, is there a motion either to accept or reject the bid? Motion by Paulson to reject, is there a second to that? Second by Tupper. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Glenn. One's a curiosity question. Typically, I wouldn't think of Dunick's as a concrete contractor. Is that something new that they're doing, or how did that come about? Which, and my second question is, is I believe the plan is, is to identify via priority, probably individual smaller projects and have them individually quoted. You're thinking, Justin, that that would be an effective way to handle them, and would we think that will get more reasonable cost in doing that?
The, the plan is to break them up in a smaller project. The, we're hoping that with the, the smaller project that the, the contractors have maybe be able to do in, in the time, time period. I think what, it was mentioned a few weeks ago that concrete contractors are pretty busy at this point, so I think the smaller projects would help. Dunick traditionally is an asphalt company, and they had a sub doing, doing the majority of this work, is what, what their plan was. For concrete, yep.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question, and this, I guess, would be directed towards Amanda. If we're going to bid it out in smaller projects, we just have to be careful to not go over that, the bid laws.
Correct. Yep. We'd have to not, aggregately, it couldn't be more than $100,000.
Okay.
Now, we could still bid it as the, the entire project and hope for, for better results. Or we could say, all right, this year, we, we've decided we're going to do half of what we had planned for and put those dollars towards something else.
Just a quick follow-up comment. This is going to be common going forward. We're seeing concrete contractors are very hard to come by. I just don't see it fixing itself in the near future, as I've been told in the last week that there's one or two local contractors that are no longer doing work as well. So, it's just going to make it harder going forward, so hopefully we can still get some concrete work done.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor, please say aye.
Reject it.
Oh, reject it, sorry. Motion is to reject the bid award. So, that would be in an affirmative, so if you want to reject it, you're saying aye. Okay? All those in favor of rejecting the bid award, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion is rejected. Item E is an approval of a resolution approving the plat of Lot 3 Watertown Railroad 3rd Edition to the municipality of Watertown in the county, in the county of Cottington, South Dakota. We will begin with our community development manager, Brandy Hutton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll get this pulled up here, but this is just a replat. Really, there's not any public improvements being done with this. It's an administrative plat, but in our ordinance, let me find it here. If there's been a administrative plat done within three years, then we can't, staff cannot administratively approve the plat again, so that's why it's before council, Plan Commission recommended its approval unanimously. This is over along Bogue Avenue, the Watertown Railroad 3rd Edition. So, with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Villhauer. Questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item F is a first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Watertown for lots 2 through 5 of Mansell 2nd Edition from its current designation of R1 to CL Lake Commercial District. Community development manager, Brandy Hutton. The floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, this is a rezone request for the Mansell 2nd Edition property, which is to the south of Lake Compesca over by Sandy Shore, just south of South Lake Drive. This property was annexed and zoned in 2018 and was platted as one lot and then subdivided further as five lots. Obviously, zoned R1 currently, and the developer is proposing to rezone to CL, which is Lake Commercial. This property is shown within the district boundary to be appropriate, to be zoned CL that it can, that is up for council consideration. There's a total of 7.92 acres involved with this property. So, with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. This is just a first reading, so there is no obligation that the city has public comments. I will, however, allow them because I feel that there are enough people who care about this issue. So, I will start with proponent, but on this issue and for the next two, I'm going to lay out some ground rules. So, I will allow public comments, both pro and con, going in that order. People who, in attendance, will be allowed to speak once and only once. And council can ask questions to the staff and to the applicant, but not to the audience. And that is just because we are not, by law, we are restricted to negotiate. We're not supposed to negotiate, and that's where some of, some of our previous conversation has devolved into, and that is not appropriate and is not legal. So, we have to avoid that. So, just wanted to explain that, and with that, I will invite any proponents to come forward and speak on this.
Mayor, could I mention one more thing?
Yes.
This, the Plan Commission heard this item at the March 9th meeting, and five were in favor, two were opposed.
Thank you very much. Any proponents? Last call. Open it up for opponents. Is there anyone opposed who would like to testify on this item? Please just come forward and identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Nancy Beasley. I have 1032 South Lake Drive. We bought the property 20 years ago in an R1. I would like it to stay that way, obviously. I didn't even know that they had chinked out that little piece of property to be in the city limits when they, when I got this zoning change. I like it to have it residential one and not commercial because I understand that they want to put some kind of an apartment building in there. I don't understand why, between two pieces of farmland, that the city, you know, where's this going? Why chink out that little piece and make it commercial property? To me, it doesn't make sense. I think the neighborhood feels that it should stay the R1. I know some other people have different concerns about it. I understand they can fill in the lots, and they are already doing some fill in those lots. So, other people have different things. I'm worried about my property values. I understand two of the people on the Planning Commission that do have some real estate background voted against it. I don't know the other five people, I hadn't talked to them, but I do believe it should stay R1, just because that's what we bought there. We like it that way, and I don't really see a compelling reason for the city council to change that. Again, it's in between two other parcels, a big slew, and I just don't see putting apartment buildings there or whatever they're planning, because once it's changed to commercial, it can be any one of like 16 different items. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beasley. Any further opponents?
No, go ahead. I'm kind of long-winded. I don't say much.
I'm Ron DeVille. I live at 1062 South Lake Drive. I've lived out in that area since 1951. That slew over there has, has been quite a asset to the lake, to Lake Compesca. We have so-called floods. The lady at the, at the corridor, when we had that meeting the last time, said there's 11 floods out at the lake. I don't know about that. But what happens is those two bodies of water, they complement each other. If Lake Compesca is, is low and there's water in Toby's slew, it goes back and forth. But what you're doing is you're, and that slew hasn't changed much as far as the, the main body of that. We're having problems with slews or with lakes and all that. You go south of, of, south and southwest of, of Lake, well, Compesca Village over there, and there's, there's, there's Goose Lake. I used to hunt that lake and ducks in it. Now, where I've hunted, it's 15 feet or better in the depth. We've got a problem up there with Bitter Lake. These lakes are all growing. We need any, any help we can get from something that holds water. And that slew hasn't changed much, maybe on the curves out there, because it goes all the way to the curves to Henry. That lake or that slew hasn't changed much in, in, in the area, except for the fact is when Lake Compesca flows in there or, or the slew fills up with extra water. But it, it goes back to its ordinary shorelines, that sort of thing. We've got, and what happens is this, this Goose Lake is going to run into Pelican. Pelican runs into the Sioux River. We haven't done anything to that river. We've always come up with this idea, and now we've got another study. Corps of Engineers is going to study it again. We studied it in the 90s. Same thing, nothing happened. We got the mogs up there, they're not really friendly, and so, we've, we've, you know, the city of Watertown just spinning their wheels. What they should probably do is get, every year, get some kind of a, put some money away and, and start on that river, going through town, some things like that, and take some of the pressure off of the, the lake and, and Toby's slew. And so, I, I'm completely against doing any type of building there. Now, they've, they've filled in, west of the, of our channel right there, they filled it all in with dirt, dries, they got all kinds of dirt over there. And we don't care about that part, because it's already done. We're looking at the channel and then going east. There's, that area there is, is wetland. And the way I understand it, they're going to try to fill that in. And that, we're completely against, and whatever it takes, I'll go, if I have to go drink whiskey with the goddamn Corps of Engineers in Omaha, that's what I'll have to do. So, just leave it alone. That's all I say. Can't do much with, with that already filled in, but east of that, taking in that channel from the west side, all that, that area and the island. That island is quite a, quite a place. But just, just kind of leave it alone, and we need that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. DeVille. Any further opponents? I do just want to say one thing about the, you referenced the Corps of Engineer and the flood study as part of your larger comments. To say that we're spinning our wheels, it might, it might feel that way. In fact, I think we, as a council, sometimes feel that way ourselves, but if you go back and listen to our previous council meetings where we are talking with the Corps of Engineers, every one of us, every single one of us looked at the Corps of Engineers and said, "We are not going down this road again to just get to the same result." We, if this is, if this is where we're ending, if this is where we're going, if this is where you're going to suggest we go, we're going to stop you right now. So, we united have told them that, that we are not going to just repeat the mistakes of the past. So, we don't know what the result is going to be. I wish I could even come close to telling you, but, and I know that there's a lot more, but I just want everyone to know that to say that we're not trying to do something better for Watertown is not our intent, so. But thank you, anyway, that, but you, I understand the comments in regard to water in general, so. No, sorry, thank you. Okay, any further opponents? But I thank you for your comments, and I'm, and I don't necessarily disagree with them, and you have the right to that, but I just wanted to say, you could go back and listen to our previous council meetings and hear us all say the exact opposite of that to the Corps of Engineers. So, any further opponents?
John Kessler, and I reside at 938 South Lake Drive, and I spent several years living at 1030 South Lake Drive, which is right across from this project. I apologize if I'm a little disjointed. I planned on having a little presentation done this afternoon, and I ended up having to go on the road, so I just got back. One of the things I wanted to look up, and I don't, if, if it's okay if I ask a question, on, on 7.92 acres, is it required to have stormwater runoff retention?
Yes.
It is, okay. Okay, so, that being said, I understand that the decision in front of this council is strictly limited to, is this proper use of the CL zoning? And we can talk, talk about fill or expanding the property. And I understand that that can't be part of your discussion, so that is not going to be anything that I'm going to address at this time. But when I first looked at this, and I'm a little embarrassed that I hadn't known this before, being a lake resident... But when I first looked at this, and I'm a little embarrassed that I hadn't known this before, being a lake resident, I looked at the, this, the CL zoning and the permitted uses. There are 16 different uses allowed in a CL zoning. Now, when I, I was somewhat involved in the Lake Compeska project. And, and I was kind of out of it when the study came back. But mostly the input that I had heard was that people wanted to be able to increase the recreational opportunities of the lake, whether it be restaurant, bar, access from the lake, a convenience-type store where it could pick up supplies, that, that type of thing. When I looked at the CL, I was quite amazed that, that this ordinance was written with these in mind. And if you, and if you allow me, I would just like to run down what those are so that other people are aware. Okay, thank you. But it is permitted uses are retail establishments, service establishments, restaurants, recreational use, campground, storage shops, apartments, recreation facility, religious institutions, and then conditional uses beyond that include a car wash, motels and hotels, automobile parking lot, storage units, office building, bar tavern, and transit station. From what I remember reviewing commercial zoning, I don't see too many things that aren't, that, that are excluded from a CL or on the CL that, that wouldn't be allowed in a normal, in a normal commercial zoning. So, and that's, and this is probably a discussion for another time, but, but maybe this is something we need to take a step back and look at this again and say, is this really what the public wanted? When they wanted, when it was suggested that we get more commercial property around the lake versus what the public really wanted. And, and I bring that up because if properties now are, are going to be rezoned CL and then we revisit that later, more than likely the properties that are already zoned CL will be grandfathered in. So that being said, all 16 of these items are potential uses for this property. So what we need to look at is, are all of these property? Because any and all of them are on the table. It's, it can be any, any of these or a combination thereof. So that is what the decision, you guys, obviously you guys know this, but this is the decision that is out in front of us. So we really need to look at the safety issue in that area. As I said, I used to live there. I used to have a 93 conversion van. Boy, I'm aging myself now. And I, and I would park that in front of my garage and I could not walk either front or back of it without being on the road. That's how close most of these properties are in that area to the road. This is also a high-traffic area. Anybody that would drive down there in the summer weekends can tell you that. So we would just be increasing the problem of, of the, the traffic issue. Infrastructure, if, have we do, are we confident that our water and sewer capabilities that it, that would take on a possible 100-unit apartment complex? There are too many what-ifs, the way this, the way this CL is written. There's definitely, and this is something that, that I was going to do this afternoon as well, was go through some of the definitions of like a service establishment, recreation facility. I did not get to that and, but that is some of the things that we just, it's not, to me, not clear definition. Maybe once I get into that and read a little more, it will be. But in closing, I would just like to say that there is, if, if, I'm sure a lot of you have been through that area. If not, I would, I would really encourage you to drive down there right now and see how tightly packed to the road that these houses are. And, and consider that in your decision to, you know, like, like I said, it's, the developers don't have to tell, tell us what, what that property is going to be. Nor does it have to stay, if they put in some quote-unquote man caves, storage facilities, apart, small apartments. Nor does it ever have to stay that. They want, once it's zoned CL, all these 16 items are on the table, whether it's now, five years from now. So I really think we need to take a hard look at the ordinance itself. Meanwhile, I would encourage you to deny this zoning request because it's just simply not the proper place for commercial. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further opponents?
Good evening. Dave Peterson, 1044 South Lake Drive. Outside of what's already been brought up, just a couple of things. The water displacement is really something that concerns us greatly. But more so, what hasn't been mentioned is the bike path is planned to go across the street, along that area we're talking about. And if you haven't been there, you should drive down. That is a very narrow corridor. It was, was just brought up. I have a number of grandkids and I've got signs out in front of my spot all summer long because it ends up being almost a racetrack down that street. Very concerning. If we're going to put some multi-tenant facility down there, we're just going to increase traffic. Parking is an issue as well. But more, more so anything, it's a safety issue. Particularly where, from the channel to the, to the east is of grave concern. But even going the other direction, it's, it's pretty dangerous walking, dogs, children. And now you put the bike path in there. It is concerning, especially anything multi-tenant. And again, the water's got to go somewhere. Last year, we had water in the ditches there till late July. And we didn't have nearly as much snow as we've had this year. So yeah, drive down there and see the, the, the windrows now are easily eight feet tall. We're going to have some issues this spring. So my, my fear again is just that increased traffic and the safety down there. The speed limit needs to be adjusted at some particular point in time, but it's very narrow and scary. So I would highly recommend, there's nothing we can do, obviously. It's already zoned R1. But we're talking maybe two or three homes as opposed to multi-tenant and additional traffic and, and places for people to park and, and increased activity is our biggest concern. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further opponents? Any further opponents? A closed public hearing. Open it up for council questions and comments. Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it was Mr. Peterson had mentioned that the bike path going along there. Has that, Amanda or Justin, has that been designed in so that we know exactly what the makeup of that bike path is? I'm assuming it's going on the south side of South Lake Drive. I'm assuming there's going to have to be some level of fill there. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. The, it's funny you mention that. We had a conversation internally about that this morning, today. But we are kind of in the planning phases on that right now, but nothing's been designed. And, but the plan is to be on the south side of the road.
Have to go there based on the location's proximity to the homes. Just no space there.
Correct.
I know it's not an issue. May I forgive me for here for a second? You and I've had some conversations about this. But just for sake, because I've had this question asked of me, I know we're not here to talk about the water issues. Those are separate issues from what we're being asked to, to look at and consider in this, this rezoning. But are any of the, is any of Toby's Slew protected from the standpoint of wetland? I've been asked that question. I don't know the answer to that. I looked on the internet. I can't tell.
I can answer that. So right now I can pull up the, what we have as far as the layer on our GIS for the jurisdictional wetland. But what would need to happen prior to a grading permit being issued would be a delineation by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers prior to development.
If it's a protected wetland?
Yep.
If it's not, then that does not need to occur. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's important. Mayor, go ahead. And I've got some other questions that I'll follow up with.
And Councilman, I, I want to make clear, perhaps I made a mistake, but water-related questions are entirely appropriate. Especially flooding or, you know, retention ponds and things like that. So that, that's completely appropriate. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Tupper.
To Ms. Hanton. So if it is a wetland, there is no possibility of them ever filling in any of that wetland, correct?
No, not necessarily. So there are different avenues that they could go down, working with the Corps. So they have a nationwide permit if you're doing, if you're filling up to an acre of wetland that they, that there is some flexibility there. But then if you would end up filling wetland and, and then you would pay the credit, there's different avenues still, but typically, I mean, the credits are expensive and so. And the thing about the CL district is you can only have 50% of lot coverage. So if there is jurisdictional wetland or low-lying areas, they're most likely not going to fill those areas because they can't put any impervious surface on it anyway.
Thank you. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hanton, this is kind of a follow-up to Councilman Danforth's question, but as far as permits for filling any wetlands, that does not come from the city, is that correct?
Correct.
That comes from the Corps of Engineers?
Yep. So they would propose, they would apply for a grading permit with the city and then we would make sure that they have their permit with the state before we would issue.
Councilman Villhauer.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I appreciate the concerns that I'm hearing out there. Many of you reached out to me because that is the ward that I represent and I appreciate your concerns. I have to say, I, I was out there today, spent some time and I drive that fairly frequently. I do have, share some of those same, or a lot of those same concerns. So I, I hear where you're coming from. I'm about as pro-development as they come in this council, but this, this one does concern me. I do have a, a couple, couple of questions, at least one that comes to mind. At the Planning Commission, there was a comment made about Indian artifacts potentially being in that area. And I see some head nodding out there. What, what has, do we know anything more about that, Ms. Hanton?
No. And I would think that, I'm not even sure which agency you report that to, but if it's already been reported, I would imagine.
Okay. Just procedurally, this was approved by the Planning Commission 5 to 2. What, what does it take? If we were to reject it, it, this only takes a simple majority to reject. It's not the other way around where we have to have a two-thirds or a supermajority. I just want to make sure we understand that. So it would take a simple majority of the seven of us to overturn it if that's our, our, our wish at that time. I might have more comments in two weeks, but I'll, I'll end it at that tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Chuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Ms. Hanton. Just curious on the, going back to the, the filling, the elevation levels from a, from a CL to an R1. Depending on, you said you can fill up to an acre. If it, if the whole entire property was a CL, then they can probably fill a little more of a wetland theoretically or not. That doesn't, that doesn't pertain on how big of an area?
Nope. It, the district doesn't matter as far as the wetlands are concerned. My comment about if it were zoned CL, they only can have 50% of lot coverage. So that, and so like basically 50% cannot be developed. So if there's a low-lying area or a wetland, those are going to be the areas that they're going to reserve and utilize towards that 50% for this, the CL district requirements.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. So just for me to get clarification on this, as an R1, theoretically, each lot could fill, they don't have the same, they don't have the same requirements as a CL, right? So they could fill their entire lot, potentially?
Yes. And they could also do, they could also fill in the CL, but the fact that they have to leave 50% of it bare, kind of why would you raise it, you know, because you can't, you can't build on it anyway. In the R1 district, there is no lot coverage requirement or restriction. So you could, in theory, have a higher impervious surface area with an R1 district.
And the reason I ask that question just is, just with the lake and the asset for this community and understanding, my limited understanding, but wetlands and, and water control, there's concern, as Councilman Villhauer and others have said, about the elevations and wetlands and, and not making mistakes we've maybe made, you know, or other communities have made in years and decades past. So I'm just, that's why I'm asking these questions about elevations and fill and, and I'll probably look into some more questions in the next couple of weeks. So, thank you.
Thank you. I know that we have a few councilmen who want to ask follow-up questions, but I feel like I have, I do have one or a tandem of them. Not putting anyone on the spot, but if my understanding is correct, no one here knows for certain that this is a federally protected or identified wetland at this point. Or do we?
Correct. We don't. And we had reached out to the Corps ahead of this, but they would have to come out and do an actual delineation. What the GIS shows here is that it's not, but this is only a, so I'll pull that up again, that you can see Toby's Slew and a portion of that island. And you can tell just by the vegetation too, that it's different. But what is shown in this blue is always what we look at at first to kind of have an idea of where a wetland might be. But it's not showing the actual land area as a wetland. But that's why we need, we would need confirmation from the Corps.
Sure. Then a question for our city attorney. Not necessarily tonight, but in two weeks when we take this up again, I would like specific clarification for the council to know. Well, first off, we absolutely have to know what the status of this is, if it's a wetland or if it's not. It seems presumptuous to me to be discussing any zoning change without knowing if we've got federal regulations that we're going to be dealing with above and beyond us. But if that is the case, if it is or if it isn't, then we as a council will have our votes. We will be restricted in many ways, either voting for or against it based upon what the feds have. If, I, I mean, I, I, I'm not certain, but I would like some clarification with that. I'm not asking for it tonight. But it seems to me that we are going to have larger governing bodies and their rules to deal with when we make our votes regarding that than just dealing with a specific ordinance and if, or a zoning request. So anyway, just keep that on your agenda. So Councilman Danforth.
Again, Mayor. Yeah, I think it is important that as we have this discussion, there's, there's wetlands as we perceive them to be, meaning we kind of all think wetlands and slews are the same thing, but then there's wetlands that are, are protected. That, that's really where we need to differentiate. Just a brandy on this, just as a point of possible help for you. I had a question on a piece of land that I had in regards to a slew that was there and whether it was protected or not. And, and the Conservation District was able to identify that for me.
Okay.
So you may want to contact them with this regard here. The county up north?
Yeah. Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, they were able to tell me that mine was not. Okay, so. Go ahead.
As the, but the actual authority would be in the Army Corps still. So that's interesting. But we can, we can look into that if there's overlap.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it was from the Conservation District's assessment of what it is or whether they were able to find out
Right.
what it was. But they were able to come back and tell me mine was not.
Okay.
With absolute certainty. I just want to express some concerns that, that I have with this whole thing. Because it's, it's important. I, you know, I've, I've been here and I will, I will say this, just for transparency purposes. I do own a property on the west side of the lake. It's not anywhere near this area, but just so people know, I do. And I do share a number- And I do share a number of the concerns that have, we've heard here tonight and others that I have. But as I have, over the years, have driven around the lake, as we all have many times, there's several areas that I look at as I drive by there and as I've been part of the Planning Commission or on the council, and it just, I struggle with even the notion of development that is there, let alone redevelopment in the case of potentially commercial. You know, that area westward from the inlet, for example, the distance from Highway 20 to the lake is so narrow, and that's, it's even worse in the area that we're talking about right now that's being looked at and considered here. And those areas are problematic. Highway 20, it is what it is with the highway itself, but the area specifically is very problematic. I drive that all the time in the summer. Very busy, very narrow. There's no place to go with the road, there really isn't. So that's a concern of mine. The other concern I have, there's a number of issues that I have with the language within the CL ordinance itself. And I think it was Mr. Kessler had mentioned something, and I agree with him, that needs to get looked at. But we have dealt fairly recently with a request in Northeast Watertown, Eastwoods Edition, where we were asked to go to an R3 from R2, and that got rejected. And a lot of our concern there was that there are no assurances that no matter, and this isn't putting anything on the developer, that they're good, bad, or other, but there's no assurances that what they tell us they're going to do, that they're going to do. And that bothers me when we're looking at redevelopment and rezoning. The other issue is, and at least near as I can tell, in the CL district, there's a max height of 60 feet for a structure there. 60 feet. In a, in an R3 zone, I believe it's, what was it?
55.
55 in R3, and 35, I think, in an R2 or R1.
Yep.
So your R1, 35-foot max height, this is 60 feet. That's not, I mean, could that go in there? It could with an apartment building, multi-story apartment building. So those uncertainties and plus the re, what is allowed within that area, the 16 different uses, and there's a number of them that you can actually go into the definitions, and it's probably way more than 16. I struggle with this. I, as I sit here today, I can't support it. And it's very concerning. To me, it's a, I don't fault the person for coming and asking, but it's just not the appropriate place for this type of development, in my opinion.
Thank you. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Although I understand some of the concerns that CL brings, the CL district was worked on for 20-plus years. And it was recently adopted, and really, this is the first one we're really seeing. Correct, Randy? I mean...
I mean, one of the first.
And so my main concern with this is, and this applies to some of the other items on tonight and what we've had in the past, but we'll never have redevelopment if, if this is always the situation that we don't know what the developer's going to do, then why do we have zoning at all? We have allowed uses for a reason. It was worked on. There was many, many committees, hours and hours and hours spent by numerous people, including several council members. And we can keep attacking these, and trust me, I get it. I mean, this room's full for a reason. But at the same time, why do we have zoning if we just always attack what's in those zoning ordinances? I, that's my main concern, and this is no different. This is a CL, it's one of the first. And we, it was created to try to have more recreation for the lake, to utilize our lake as a resource. And I don't know what the correct answer is. I appreciate everyone here tonight bringing their comments, but again, where around the lake is appropriate if one certain spot's not, because the next one, we're going to have the same exact conversation. So that's my...
Thank you, Councilman. Just a warning, and this isn't for you, Councilman, in particular, but just want to remind the council that the ordinances are what they are, the zoning requirements are what they are. We have a CL zoning designation. We are not argue, we are not here to argue the merits or demerits, that is for another time. That is not germane to this conversation. This conversation is only on this particular development. I allowed some leniency there because I could see where you were getting at, which is, we don't know what we got, but I just caution the council to tread lightly. We're not debating the zoning classification in general. We're debating this specific zoning request. Councilman Tupper?
Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, which I, hopefully I'm not, but... So what's in front of us tonight and what's going to be in front of us in two weeks is basically whether or not we want to change zoning from one specific area to the other. It's already been brought into the city, it's already been zoned R1. So the, when it was brought into R1, that's when it should have been addressed. Are we filling in Toby Slough, or are we changing the water? Maybe it was. I wasn't on the council in 2018. Our question is, the council's going to be, it's not whether we have a water issue, if we have a traffic issue, because I can tell you when Sunnyside was out there, there was a bigger traffic issue back then. There's always going to be a traffic issue around the lake because that road was designed how many years ago? And look how many people are around the lake right now. But our decision's going to be whether or not we want to switch that from R1 to, or excuse me, C1 or CL, whatever they call it. It's not whether or not we're changing Toby Slough or whether there's Indian artifacts out on the island. It's basically, we got two decisions, because the one decision's already been made for us. It is zoned R1 already. It is been brought into the city. Do we want to change that zoning? And that's the only request we have in front of us, and that's what we really need to look at.
It is my understanding that you are completely correct in your assessment. City Manager Mack, did you have anything to add? Okay. Councilman Villahauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to point out, in the course of the last few days, our friends from Lake and Pesca Water Project District have reached out to me, probably to several of us actually, expressing their concern. And one thing which they included in their correspondence to me was some diagrams from our Lake and Pesca master plan that we adopted here just fairly recently. And that is an area that is identified as one that is of a concern as far as over, you know, commercialization. They also make reference, the diagram makes reference to disconnected or poorly connected wetland. So anyway, that was pointed out in our Lake and Pesca master plan, to be cautious of that area as far as overdevelopment.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak before Councilman Paulson speaks a third time? Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just because that was brought up...
Uh, Councilman Beeler, would you like to say something?
Yes, please.
Councilman Paulson, is that all right? Thank you. Take it away.
Sorry, Colin, it's tough when you're on the phone like this to get through in the right spot. Anyway, just a couple of comments that I have, you know, in relation to a comment that Councilman Paulson made. I don't think any of us are trying to attack anything. That was something that you said in regards to how we, how we're allowing these developments. And we do have, we obviously have zoning so that we can listen to these things because they are subjective, so we can make a decision if it's the right fit. And without getting too verbose here, I just want to say, I don't, you know, we look at all the permitted uses. We always have to look at that, we have to look at what's going to happen in the future for any one of those permitted uses. And to me, I'm just going to say right out of the chute, this does not look, feel right to me. This does not look like the right location for a CL. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I might save these for two weeks. I'll save them.
All right. It's an open mic. Okay, would anyone like to speak before Councilman Danforth speaks a third time? Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a procedural question. When it comes down to conditional uses, if a request for an item in the conditional use, that goes for the Planning Commission or Board of Adjustments?
Board of Adjustment.
Okay, so when it goes to the Board of Adjustments, and if it gets approved, that does not come to the council to be, it is what it is, whatever the Board of Adjustments decides, correct?
Correct.
So we have permitted uses that are in question, good, bad, or other, they are. But then we get the conditional uses, which really are even less attractive within any given zone, that the council has no say on, other than what's on in the ordinance, correct? That's concerning, because the only remedy to that then is Circuit Court. If somebody gets what they want and they don't, and somebody else doesn't like it, it's Circuit Court, or if they don't get what they want, it's Circuit Court. This council doesn't have any say, other than approval of the ordinance language. We don't have any say in what does get approved for the conditional uses, and that's concerning. I understand the process, and that's what I thought it was, but in a scenario like this, I find some of this very troubling to even think that it's on here. And I don't want to get scolded by the mayor, because I will be here in a minute, probably. The other thing is, I see somebody has a baby here, and this, that's probably like child abuse having them here at this meeting, I think, but... So anyway, it's good to have them here, but anyway, I just wanted to clarify that as to the conditional uses because they were mentioned earlier.
Any further questions or comments? All right, City Manager Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. I have in my notes that for the next discussion on this specifically, I'd like some clarification on the wetlands delineation. Is there additional information that staff can provide to further discussion and get you to a decision, whatever that decision might be?
I would say, I'm unclear exactly how to phrase it, but the wetland delineation, and then if it is or if it is not, what are we restricted or unrestricted for as a city council? Because in my mind, we'd be voting upon, let's say if it is a wetland, we'd be voting upon a very limited possibility
Sure.
theoretically. But then also in reverse, if it was not a wetland, then we would be opening it up for a much wider interpretation of development, so.
Anything else?
Councilman Danforth, you had a question?
Amanda, and maybe it's to somebody in the public, I don't know that, but you know, over the, over the many discussions over the years, you know, there, you hear about the channel, I heard the word "channel" tonight. I don't, I know there's like a culvert that comes into the lake or something, but it'd be nice to understand that better. But you know, where did that come from? Whose responsibility is it? Was that done privately? Was that done governmentally in some manner? Who maintains it? I don't know anything about it, but it would be good to know that because that is right in this area. That would be something I would add, Amanda.
And sorry, you can contact us after the meeting. I do have one more. This is probably an unfair question because it's probably years ahead of time, but the question of where the bike path is going and how that impacts possible drainage is a question as well. I know that we probably don't have a specific plan for it, but I just know from other areas where we've had bike paths, it affects the situation, so I would like at least some understanding of that as well. And sir, Mr. DeVille, you can, like, even write down your question if you want to, but I can't allow...
I'll wait.
Okay, fair enough. Chair also has one more question. I don't, it's not necessarily for staff, but growing up, I was told that that peninsula, at the edge of that peninsula, there was a still on it during prohibition. Can anyone confirm or deny that there was an illegal still brewing alcohol on that peninsula?
It was on the, far on the west side of Sandy Shore.
Okay.
At first pass.
Okay. I've heard different, I've heard different interpretations, whether there was a still or whether that was just a hiding spot. Okay, okay, well, thank you very much, so we will...
Mayor, could I also provide a little more information with flood control?
Yes.
Okay, so I know that has been a point of concern, and so I just want to, and flood control is very important to us and at Lake and Pesca and Lake Pelican, our three other watersheds, too. So just as far as the, this is LiDAR data that we have, basically, they fly it and get the elevations of where the land is today. And so what this map is showing is these dark, these darker blacks, so you've got black and gray. The darker areas are actually, it's reversed, you would think that means it's deeper, but it's actually more shallow. These are the areas that in the 100-year event would be inundated. So you can see that the area in the yellow, that shows the R1 zoning designation. Those areas, if the lake flooded and it was over the 1724.8, which is the 100-year base flood elevation, that these are the areas that would be inundated. So it's not, and when I calculated this, with the 7.2, 7.92 acres currently in question of being rezoned, then there is about 61% of the land that would not be used even for flood storage in the 100-year event. So then, kind of going back to me touching on the 50% lot coverage requirement, so you would be reserving all of your current flood control with that requirement in the CL district because they would have to, they would have to retain 50% of that land, and only 61% of it would actually be inundated in a flood event, so. Or no, 61% would not be, so. And it's not a floodway, it's a flood plain, so to build and develop in there, they would need to bring in fill so that they were a foot above the base flood elevation.
Yeah, anything that goes in there, whether it be a house or commercial, has to bring in fill, so. Councilman Chuddy, do you have a question that we need to?
That, thank you, Mayor. That just helps my question earlier about if it stays R1, theoretically, you could be filling more of that in, whereas as a CL, theoretically, half of it may not be filled up as much.
Mm-hmm.
Correct? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions that we need to get answered before the next hearing? There are none, we'll wait until the next hearing. Item G is a first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown for Lot 3 Stony Point, second edition from R1 to CL. Community Development Manager Hanton will give you, why don't you pause for about 30 seconds? We'll let the room clear for just a little bit. And Councilman Danforth, City Manager Mack had a great idea. She's, is getting the child some food, so.
I want something for my kids, too.
Yeah. Thank you. Ooh, lovely. All right, Community Development Manager, Hanton?
Thank you, Mayor. So this next first reading is for another rezone, and this is also at Lake and Pesca, up in the Stony Point development. This lot is currently zoned R1, single-family residential, and the owners and applicants are proposing to rezone it to the CL Lake Commercial. You'll see there is C2, local commercial to the east. That's where the current Point condos, the Stony Point condos reside. And then there are two, there are two R1 lots to the west that, had to try to make that more clear, of this, of this existing property. And then to the south, there is the CL Lake Commercial District. And so that is what is for adjacent zoning. The lot is conforming to the lot size requirements. The Planning Commission did not, however, did not recommend the approval to council. So, and that was a three to four vote. So with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you very much. This is just a first reading, but I will allow a public hearing. I just want to remind the council that this did not come out of the Planning Commission with a majority approval.
I just want to remind the council that this did not come out of the Planning Commission with a majority approval. So when this gets voted upon, it is going to need a two-thirds council vote in favor of changing this zoning designation. So I will ask for proponents.
Jeremiah Grandguard here. We basically bought that property knowing that, you know, we're bordering Stony Point, all the apartments there and stuff and the condos. We're just looking for, as this gets all developed with their, their master plan, that we just have some options. I know that, you know, you kind of beat the CL to death on the last one, but we're not looking to, you know, we're just looking to have some options with, you know, with, you know, like, you know, later when that all gets developed, you know, they'll have a food truck out there once the rest of it gets built. You know, there's going to be, you know, another big, huge place with a bar and what have you. So we're just basically looking to have options with, with that.
All right, thank you. And sir, your last name was Grandguard?
Yep, Grandguard.
Okay, thank you. Any further proponents? Any further proponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for council questions and comments. Councilman Danforth.
Thank you again, Mayor. I think the thing we gotta be a little bit careful on this one is, is we're probably not going to get the volume of people that would, would communicate concern with this. Just because it's, that whole point has been battled for several years and it's gotten to where it is today. But we really have, if I, if I am correct, where the R1 designation is on, on the, the map is really where there is a home existing today, correct? So there's one on each side of it? A, a R1 zone on each side?
No.
Empty lot. No, but you got each side, left to right, east to west, however you look at it.
We're the, we're the blue.
Forsberg has those two.
Right, that is currently R1.
Yes.
Okay, the house is where the R1, right there.
Right here. Right here.
All right, so there's one lot in between, correct then, is what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay. And the trouble I have with this, and you know, I know Colin, your, your statement is somewhat correct in that, geez, it's not been very long ago that we did all this and set this and people make investments and commitments based on what we've done. And then we turn around and now we're going to take, and it's going the more difficult way. And that's going from an R1 to a commercial property. And that's, it's very difficult to justify that all the time. I mean, we've got a whole area that's up there that quite frankly, it's not developing like I think we had envisioned it would. And the area is somewhat problematic up there in regards to the state of it up there. And now we're looking at increasing the, the CL aspects of it. And that is a concern to me. I think we have to protect the homeowners that have made the commitments. And it's such a small area up there, I have concerns with the, with the rezoning. And I personally, I would support the decision of the, the Plan Commission.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Villahauer.
Thank you, Mayor. She was not able to be here tonight. Maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I did, I was contacted by Tara Jacobson as far as being opposed to this. I just will, will relay that concern to the council.
Thank you. And that is questionable. I will instruct the council in, as a court of law, that that is hearsay until Tara is actually here to say it on herself. But.
I can second that too.
For note, I think, but Tara also owns the land to the east of that and has a house there, is that correct?
To the west.
The west?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay. Any further questions or comments? All right. Are there any questions that staff should be pursuing before the next hearing? Close the public comp, close the hearing and go to item H. A first reading of an ordinance of a zoning map amendment for a portion of property due to be known as Eastwoods 19th Edition and a portion of Lot 37, Block 13 of Eastwoods 17th Edition from the current designation of R2 and A1 to a PUD Planned Unit Development District. Community Development Manager Brandy Hinton, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the first reading of a rezone request for the property to be known as Eastwoods 19th or as we know it as Eastwoods 19th. I'll pull up the petitions here so we can see, there's the, the portion that has been previously heard when they had proposed to rezone it to R3, multifamily residential. And having the concerns of the city does not regulate covenants. So, and that, and that's what was being discussed or proposed. So now that the covenants are a part of this PUD plan that is proposed. And so the current property that the developer owns is zoned R2. They're proposing to rezone that to PUD, the Planned Unit Development. And then the city portion of property, which currently is the reserved drainage area, it would not change. This application, it's a part of the application to meet that five-acre minimum requirement for the PUD and hopefully act as a buffer that would remain undeveloped and be able to see some of those, the transitional requirements or covenants per se that were not able to be associated in the R3 multifamily residential district. So the, let's see if there's, I think with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you very much. Any further staff testimony on this? No? All right, I will open a public hearing. I want to reiterate to the council that, and everyone in attendance, everyone can speak once, only once. Questions can be asked to staff and the applicant by law. We are not here to negotiate. Council can offer what they would consider to be amendments to the PUD, but that would also likely kick it back, if any, if any amendment was approved by the council, it would likely kick it back to the Planning Commission. But, so you can possibly do it, but I want you to just be aware of that. Are there, are there any proponents on this item?
Mayor, if I may add again, I forgot the, to mention again that the Plan Commission did recommend approval 5 to 2 at the March 9th meeting.
Thank you. City Manager Mack.
Just additional clarification that any, any amendments would actually be voted on at the April 3rd meeting and then that would kick it back to the Plan Commission.
Councilman Tupper, you had a question?
Just out of fairness, I guess, and I've sat through the Plan Commission meetings, I've sat through the council meetings, and we've always started with the proponents of this. Could we change that up and ask for the opponents of this first? Can you see where I'm coming from?
What I will do is I will allow the proponents a rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Because I can understand, but it's unfair because while we do know what is being proposed, it's just against, against Robert's rules to allow opponents first, so.
Kellen Bluedorn with Archer Land Company, as well as my partner Dustin Kotman here. Good evening, it's nice to see you all again, thanks for not kicking us out of here. We're grateful for having the opportunity to present our updated PUD rezoning petition today. We'd like to take this opportunity to address any concerns and highlight the benefits of our, our updated plans here. We want to assure you that we've been continuously adjusting our plan to better the neighborhood, recognizing that compromise is necessary to ensure our development is a positive addition to the community. We're committed to continuing to working collaboratively with the community to address any concerns and make this project a success. One of the, some of the key advantages in here, we do have three townhome buildings that serve as a buffer there along the east or the west and the south side, as you can see on the map. And they are zero-entry style living, so beneficial for elderly or, or handicap style units. As well as our three 12-plex buildings pushed along the north side there. And they would each have an ADA unit as well on the main floor. Our project consists with the existing zoning next to it to the east as far as adding that R2-style buffer on the south and the west. And we feel that would fit in there nicely. And the location of our development is in an otherwise undeveloped parcel, maximizing the use of existing infrastructure and contributing to a tax-based growth. We're not asking for any subsidies from the city. It's all a private project. The development will include any necessary sidewalks to connect to the walking paths over there to the west. So we would be, it would be on our dime to put those sidewalks in. Additionally, our project will provide 100% of off-street parking, reducing the congestion on nearby streets and increasing safety for the residents. We understand that controlling water runoff is essential to protect the surrounding area and prevent erosion. Our develop, will, our development will implement measures such as permeable pavement and rain gardens to manage stormwater and control water runoff per rain events, information required by the city. And we do have call-in here from Austin Engineering if there is questions. Obviously, we haven't done all of the drainage information yet until we get this passed. And then we have to abide by a civil plan and go along with that as far as any of the drainage goes. I know we spoke to a few of the neighbors regarding that. We'd, we'd love to make sure that it, that it works great and I don't have any guarantees of how that's all going to work, but. We acknowledge that our proposal involves changing the existing zoning and we take this responsibility seriously. We believe that our development will be a valuable addition to the community and we're committed to making it work. We want to be good neighbors in every way possible and welcome feedback and suggestions. And Dustin was going to show a few of the exhibits. We brought a few more drawings just to give a real good picture of what it's to look like.
So this first exhibit, first exhibit here showing the setbacks to adjacent structures. The existing R3 six-unit buildings, neighboring buildings there are 227 feet from the adjacent houses other side of the screen. So them are the two-story buildings that will be similar in height to our 12-plex buildings. So that's 227 feet. Our buildings will be 390, 393 feet from the closest adjacent residential R1-type, single-family home. So a lot further away than them, them six-plex buildings are.
And that's not the townhomes, that's just.
Yeah, the town, the townhomes are a single level more consistent to like a, the same height as a, as a single, single-story residential house. So Exhibit 2 would be the next, next image. This is kind of shows it from the north, how the, how the 12-plex buildings would be on the north side and to the south and to the, to the west. We have these townhome-style units, single level. And then showing the, kind of visualizing the buffer to the south there, the distance from the, the townhome-style units to the adjacent structures there. So then the third picture, this is kind of a low angle from the south. Yet there's concerns as far as what that visual would look like, looking from the south. And then we had one other picture from, from the south. Kind of showing what that visual would look like from the south. So feels like it's consistent with that adjacent property and it would be a, you know, an attractive community there. Not too abrupt or aggressive of, of building structures.
And I know that there was some concern about the R3, like Mr. Danforth had said. And we thought this would be a better compromise where we wouldn't have the ability just to go and build 120 units there and maximize the density with five-story buildings. The 12-plexes do fit in the R2 style for the height. They are beneath the 35-foot height restriction. And currently there's 48 units there. And yeah, just wanted to point that out, but we've tried to, we tried to work a little bit. I know that Bruce Bueller had, had kind of asked about buffering that. And at the time, we weren't sure how that worked, but we did go back to the drawing board and tried to buffer that with the townhomes along the west and the south, so. That should be about everything, I guess. I hope that explains it and the pictures help. And if there's any questions, let us know.
Thank you. Any further proponent testimony? Any further proponents? Any opponents?
Thank you, council. Mike Oddland, 1279 Cherry Drive in Watertown, where I've lived since 2015, which was the same year that this land in question was zoned, annexed and zoned R2. Before I get started here, Mayor, first of all, since the proponents are getting a chance to offer a rebuttal, are the opponents afforded the same opportunity?
Tell you what I'll do, I'll even take away the ability of the proponents to have a rebuttal. Because this is not a public hearing, okay? I'm granting a lot of leniency to allow anyone to testify, anyone other than the applicant, to testify. So I want to just make that clear, that we as a council are overstepping our bounds, not necessarily. I mean, we can allow that unless there's someone on the council who disagrees. But, so I'll just say, because the applicant actually does have a chance to field the questions, whereas the opponents don't. Because that's, we're not in the business of negotiating a deal as a council. So I will take away the proponents' right of rebuttal.
Mayor, I'm fine with that too. I believe the proponents did a great job, so. Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned, 1279 Cherry Drive, I've lived there since 2015 when this land was zoned R2. There have been some changes along the way with the plan. R3 was rejected by the Planning Commission and the city council. And now we've, the developers have pivoted to this planned unit development. And I will concede that with a planned unit development, you get some of the assurances that you don't get with R3, which is good. Obviously, our first in the neighborhood, our first desire is to keep this zoned R2. As it's currently zoned, I think it's the best fit for the neighborhood. The Mayor, I quoted, I wrote down your quote just a few minutes ago, Mayor. You said zoning ordinances are what they are. Well, the PUD zoning ordinance, and I'll find it here, chapter 21.38. The PUD zoning says that upon application of the owner, you can submit a request to rezone to a PUD to any area exceeding five acres in size, five acres. In this case, the private land included in this request is 3.13 acres. So since I'm allowed to ask questions, Mayor, and this is a question that I have not been able to get answered, who in the city authorizes the city's involvement with land in this PUD request?
Actually, if I said it wrong, I will take your question and we will ask it as a council. But what I want to get away from is this interplay where we are trying to negotiate between, in, in, basically, this is not a public hearing, so, and we're not trying to negotiate. So state your question, we will make sure that it gets asked. So who?
There are 1.92 acres of city, city-owned land included in this PUD request. Who gives authorization for the city to include their land in the request that we're talking about tonight?
If it's all right with the council, I could have City Manager Mack answer that question now.
I can attempt to answer it or Brandy can answer it as well. Ultimately, the city council is the one who makes the decision to formally include that land in this process or not. It comes through the Plan Commission and the council as a staff recommendation.
So was there a public, can I ask a follow-up question, Mayor, is that okay?
Yes.
So if the city council determines whether or not the city's land is included in the PUD, when and where was that decision made?
That's the discussion right now. So that's the discussion right now and that's the decision that'll be made on April 3rd.
Very good. Here's the analogy I make. And I don't envy you folks on the city council because these rezoning questions get really, really sticky and they're hard. And I know that and I appreciate the hard decision that you folks have to make. The analogy I would make is that you as a council, when you, when you are hearing these rezoning requests, you act as a referee, making sure the rules are followed, adhered to, like a referee would do in a ballgame. The city is now a petitioner in this rezoning request. You've gone from a referee to a player. If not for the city's land, 1.92 acres being included in this PUD request, I wouldn't be sitting here right now having this. If not for the city's land, 1.92 acres being included in this PUD request, I wouldn't be sitting here right now having this conversation with you, because you wouldn't have the necessary five acres. And to my knowledge, I've asked around, to my knowledge, there has not been, this would be precedent-setting, that there has never been a PUD in a residential area that has included city land. I know they, they won't own it. I know that the city's going to maintain it. I know the developers can't build on it. But you're a petitioner in this. The city is a player, not a referee anymore. And as a neighborhood, we've seen R3 shot down, and we thought, okay, where's this going to go now? And now with the PUD and the city being a petitioner in this, we feel like our challenge is not only against the developer, but the city as well. And if this is approved, I'm just wondering what kind of precedent it sets and what kind of message it sends to other developers that are looking to increase the size of their development, include more buildings, increase the value of a new development specifically in a residential area. If you do it for these developers, do you have to do it for all of them? And what kind of potential chaos could that create? I, I don't know. But I've never seen anything like this before. Again, I, I think the plan has improved from where it could be. Density is still a problem for folks in our neighborhood. My concern, and I'm not going to speak for everybody in the neighborhood, my concern has shifted from the plan itself to the pathway that we're going down with city-owned land being part of this. I just have a deep, deep problem with it. The other issue I have is the vetting of this planned unit development. When we were before the Planning Commission a few weeks ago, Attorney Kiriko mentioned to the Planning Commissioners, if you have any concerns about this development, if you have suggested changes, anything you want to bring up, now is the time to do it. She said it. Nothing was raised, aside from Commissioner Rhonda Dargatz-Johnson expressing concern over the safety of the parking lot. Nothing else was addressed. You folks know we've had drainage issues up there. Don Robey, bless his heart, he brought it up at every City Council meeting until we got that Cherry Creek retrenched. Now with all these impervious surfaces up there, what's that going to do to water runoff? And the changes that were made with Cherry Creek, it hasn't been talked about at all. There's been no talk about snow storage or snow removal. Where's that going to go? Because that was previously talked about when Joy Nelson owned the property. And another concern is that 14th Avenue is the main arterial collector street that will carry traffic to and from this property. It's a narrow half-street. That's it. It's unfinished on the north side of the road, no curb and gutter. And I can tell you, last week, when we had those strong winds, it was drifted down to a single lane of traffic. If you do not believe me about how problematic 14th Avenue can get in the wintertime, I suggest you call Rob Bain, the Street Superintendent, and ask him. Because he's told me the amount of time they have to spend to keep that open. So again, I appreciate your concerns tonight. Again, my main concern is the pathway that we're going down here. With the city being a petitioner in a rezoning request in a residential property. And if you're all comfortable with that, I want you to think about that, if you would, please. And we'll be back here again in a couple of weeks and talk about this more, but I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Any further opponents?
Hi, Jason Rademski, former City Councilman of Ward B. I remember this very well, because I sat on the council when this all took place. And this all came to light. Mike was up here and we brought this up week after week after week at every council meeting. We didn't promise anything that could be done, but what we did say is we would take a look, listen to your concerns. And then it was decided that we trenched that out to the cost of $75,000, which was taxpayers' money. And my concern is, once again, if the city still owns this and we, are we going to regress against the progress we made there by retrenching this with all the impervious, you know? You got a lot of area that's going to be drainage running through there. And eventually, a lot of those streets up there, because they weren't done right the first time, don't meet the specifications of what a new street would meet today. You know, I'm not against growth and development. I sat on several TIF-approved projects. But I think at some point in time, you have to take a look at what's best for the neighborhood, what's best for an established neighborhood. And there's quite a few houses out there that have been established. There's a nice park that runs through there. And I don't like the fact either that when you're donating city land and then the city, to, to help a developer out, and then you're turning around and also, you know, have to take responsibility of that same land that you donated, what's the outcome going to be and the cost to the taxpayer in the end? And the taxpayer is everybody in Watertown that has to pay for that if, you know, and it, and eventually, that's probably going to have to be dug out again. And I just want to make sure that we're not redressing against the progress that we've already made up there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further opponents?
Hi, my name is Mark Issler, 1228 Cherry Drive. And I've been to every one of these meetings. And I've, I've got a pretty good memory. But when they come up with a plan that, you know, the neighborhood was talking, might look good, they were offered a PUD. They didn't want a PUD. Now, all of a sudden, when you voted it down, now this PUD came up. Where, like Paulson just said a little bit ago, you zoned something, why are you taking the time? Why is the city spending the money to zone something and then allow something that is not fit in the zone? I just think it's a waste of my time. It's a waste of the city's money and the city's time. And there's a lot of builders, and I grew up here. I never heard of one get two acres for free, that the city will mow, maintain. It don't happen. You know, let's, let's, we've, the neighborhood up there has millions and millions of dollars invested, millions. And our taxes went up drastically. I think the city, the City Council works for the people, and we're telling you, we don't want this. There is somebody out there that will develop that property, but it's gonna, it's gonna fit in the zone too, the way it was zoned. You know, does anybody have a question for me? I mean, it's simple as that. It's simple, simple, simple.
Sir, I said that we're not in the business of negotiating. That would be negotiating a land deal or not negotiating one. And that's what we, as a council, we're, it's not legal for us to do so.
You, you put, we were told six months. I said, in six months, you're going to have to rent the Denny Sanford Premier Center, the people I'll bring in there, that'll be against this. Or you'll have to have the gymnasium, because I'll fill it. You know, I'll, I'll walk every day and knock on every door. So far, I haven't found one person that thinks that the, the city getting involved with a builder is the right thing to do. I haven't talked to one person. I grew up here. You know, I haven't ran into one person that said, oh yeah, that's a good idea. So no, I'm not here negotiating. I'm telling you, let's, let's make them wait the six months and we'll fill the auditorium. You know, I, I don't owe no taxes. I pay my taxes. And all my neighbors around that whole area, you know, just took a great big hike in their taxes. And then I've lived it before. I've lived it. You know, I've lived in areas where they allow these apartment buildings and these rentals in there. Pretty soon, your crime's up. You got to watch everything in your yard or it's gone. That's not why I bought up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further opponents?
All right, Leanne Youngen. I live at 1273 Cherry Drive. We built our house in 2010. Excuse me. I have a concern that I, I was not at the, the planning zoning. We were out of town. We were on vacation. And I don't know if there was public comments allowed at that, but I don't believe so. Okay, so there was. If the planning and zoning had already turned down the R3 rezoning before, or did not recommend it, and then you guys also did not pass it, then why is it different now? And why are, why are you guys willing to stick your, your land to go for it? The four-plexes, the townhomes that are being considered, are not even what would be considered regular R2 development. They are an R2 with a contingent, with a conditional use. Thank you, Brandy. That's something that you guys wouldn't even be able to vote on? It would go to the planning and zoning, is that what, I just, for clarification, that would have, would be just at, at the, at the Board of Adjustments, okay? So it's something that, that is already above and beyond the R2 status for the, for the boundaries. I do think that this plan does have improved, or has improved, but it is still not what, as a neighborhood, we are looking for. When it was going to potentially be duplexes, I like that there's a buffer, but a four-plex is above and beyond the R2. The trees that they put in there in the pictures, they look great. But we all know that it takes 15 years for those trees to get that size. I'm still going to be looking at twigs. I have asked the City Council, or I, I shouldn't say the city. I've asked the, the previous mayor, or the previous mayor and the mayor before that, in that, when they changed the waterway and they said that they were going to do some work to get it to blend, if we could plant trees on that, I had to leave a nine-foot easement at the back of my lot that I couldn't plant trees in. There's no trees on the city's property. I mow it. I water it. I keep the weeds out of it, so they don't grow into my yard. And we have trees. We've planted them. They've grown. But they have not grown enough to be a good visual barrier from this development. The city has done nothing on that property. They don't even mow it. They don't move any of the snow, nothing to prevent any of the weeds coming into my yard. That is my main problem with this, is, is that it's higher density than the regular R2 would be on the buffers that they've planned. And that there is not a good visual barrier that is going to be in place until I'm retired. And I got a lot of years left to work. That is, okay, that statement. My next statement is, you say that, that this isn't a, a work session. It's not for negotiation. This development in the PUD would not have even been an idea in this developer's mind, had it not been brought up by Heath Fawney at a City Council meeting. It was never in play. It was discussed, and it was a two-hour work session that made me miss picking up my son from basketball practice. He sat at the rec center for two hours while we sat here and negotiated a plan. And that was ridiculous. It was just to decide on whether it should be rezoned from R2 to R3. And the whole plan of this PUD was brought up and negotiated and discussed at, at a City Council meeting. And us residents, we didn't have much of a say. So once again, you just denied it. I'm not saying that it's a, a bad plan. It's improved upon, but it is not where it needs to be. And it shouldn't have even been in play for another five months, because it was, it, this is substantially like the last rezone. And there's a six-month waiting period for that. And the city is joining in and tagging, and it feels like we are being excluded as residents and city members. The developers, they aren't even in the city. They don't hire people. They hire people. They have their own crews from an outside county. So other than the sales of the lot, they get their, their building materials from a place outside of the county, outside of the city. Their employees are outside of the county, outside of the city. They'll have property taxes and the sales tax on the land. And that is all that is going to help the city. Other than, yes, it does solve housing problems. There are housing problems everywhere in this city. And Councilman Villahauer, when you last spoke, when it was on the R3, and you said that we just previously had, had approved one earlier that meeting to go from R2 to R3, that parcel of land was in no way, shape or form similar to the land that you were denying, that you guys denied last time, but you wanted to approve. It was not the same. Two R1 homes. And a church, and R2 and R3 is not the same as all of those houses that are on that piece of land. Yes, there is R3 right next door, and there is R2 right next door, but there are a lot more single-family homes that are in direct contact than the two, maybe three, that are on Jefferson Circle. It's not even considered same. And 14th Avenue is a lot larger and can handle way more. There was also nobody opposing that either. This has a lot more people opposing it. It is not the same situation. So I don't think that you can compare those two. And I know that the past is the past, but like I said, and like the mayor just said, this isn't a negotiation. It is not a work session. And all of this PUD was brought up as a work session during a City Council meeting, taking up our time. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually do have some insight onto that, but first I want to ask if there's any further opponents? Any further opponents? Okay, we will close it. As a matter of fairness, I allowed the opponents to ask questions to the council. I will allow the proponents to ask a question, if you have one. Okay. I'm going to start with City Manager Mack, because Mrs. Youngen, your question deserves to be answered as far as the negotiation, as far as what it was. So City Manager Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a point of clarification, at the last council meeting, it would have been the end of February. I believe when this matter was heard and as an R3 request, at that time, it was asked of staff what options might be available to enforce covenants. That was the discussion that was happening, is that the neighborhood wanted some assurances on what would be, what could be built there. That is when the, the PUD was brought up, because the city doesn't enforce private covenants. The only way to guarantee that a specific development is going to be built to the specifications that a neighborhood wants or the council wants is to go the PUD route. When you go the rezone route, any allowable uses or conditional uses are up for consideration. You're approving the zoning. When you go the PUD route, you're approving the development. You're approving the zoning. When you go the PUD route, you're approving the development plan. You're saying, I approve of these buildings, this buffering, this parking. And that's how it came up. It wasn't a negotiation. Staff was asked, what are options to provide more certainty, more clarity, uh, more reassurances to the neighborhood? And we mentioned the PUD. At the time, the applicant said, we don't know that a PUD will work for us. We feel like there may be some additional costs associated with that, that we're not sure we can cover. And so that's how it came to be. Council voted down the R3, um, request and the applicants went back and put pen to paper. That's how the PUD discussion came about. Additionally, there's some, just to clarify some language, so when a council has a work session, it is typically not on a regularly scheduled council night and no decisions are made at those work sessions. They are largely to share information, ask questions and generate consensus on what direction the council wants to go on any given, any given matters. Just, just providing clarification on that.
Yes, thank you. And, um, not to get too much more into it, but if there has been a mistake made in the perception of negotiation, I will take full blame on that. I run the meetings and I would take the blame. That was never my intention. If I remember back those meetings, the questions came largely, they weren't necessarily negotiations as far as I remember. They were coming from the council as far as, because all of the questions that we were getting and that we were most concerned with is if we allowed it to go R3, was there any assurance that the developer or the new owner would actually follow through on the plan that they proposed? And there was none because if you zoned it R3, there was none. So there was many people on the council asking, okay, we, we're not necessarily opposed to the plan, but with the zoning, we understand that that problem exists, that you're opening Pandora's box. So what assurances could we have? That was us just wondering what we could possibly do. And that was when Public Works Director Von I answered, you could do a PUD. Ever since that point, I can also understand where some of the residences or residents would have an issue of the perception of negotiation. And for that, I actually have a question that I want to address as well because when this was not voted or voted against at the council, the residents were under the perception that it had to wait six months at least before it comes back. It did not. Would you please explain how that is possible that we are back here in such a short order? Community Development Manager Hen, if you want to take it or someone else?
Yes, yes, I can. So in the zoning ordinance, there's a stipulation about reapplication after a zoning designation is denied. So the R3 multifamily residential is what was denied. And that is a separate zoning district than the PUD planned unit development. So there, they are two separate zoning districts, even though the plans are very similar, they are still applying for a different or proposing a different district. So that's why it can come back before the six months.
Okay. And I also know, I, I won't even add, address this as a question. I just want to say a few things before I open it up for council, but I just want to make some things clear. There has been, I understand the concern about the six months and the city being involved. I want to make one thing clear. None of these ideas came from the city council. We're, we have never been dealing with them saying, hey, what if we give you city land to make this possible? That came from our staff. They're not to blame. They're operating under the rules of law. Now you can disagree with the decision they made, but they have not done anything illegal or improper. They've just been trying to figure out a way to make it happen. And they brought forward this plan that we did not approve of. We did not condone, nor did we drive. It was driven by the applicant. So to, I, I, I know that a lot of people have been looking at us saying, you generally, and I get that because you're wondering answers. To some extent, we're in the same boat as you. We're trying to find the answers to come with a decision. And that's not to say that anyone is to blame because it's not. The applicant wanted to develop here. We know that there has been interest. Staff worked with the developer to come forward with a plan. That is what we are dealing with now. We, as a council collectively, have not had any part in doing this. We are just trying to decide upon that. And just one more thing that I want the residents to at least understand is if you feel like that it has been pushed through or anything improper, I want to stress that even tonight, we don't need to allow a public hearing on any of this. We are doing it because I think it's fair and it's right. So I want everyone to know that, as a matter of fairness, I want everyone to be able to be heard. So that's why I'm not shutting down debate or shutting down public comment. So you can disagree with my methods. I understand that. And I will take blame for that and the negotiations, but I'm just trying to create a fair hearing to let everyone know what is at stake and get their questions answered. And with that, I will ask for questions from the council. Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. This could be a while, but, um, first of all, I've got a couple of comments. The whole notion of, of a PUD, uh, from my standpoint, somewhat started well into the discussion on the R3. Because when a lot of you meet and you meet together as a group, what people are willing to say is different than what they're willing to tell somebody on a one-on-one basis. Okay? And I've had the opportunity prior to this, and I've had the opportunity this week with, uh, with my phone ringing off the hook between all the items that we have, uh, in front of us tonight, where I've spoke with eight different individuals, um, that are previously, they're in this area. They called me specifically about this topic. And prior to the PUD present, or the, what's being presented here, we're all against the development. Not the PUD, but the, the R3 redevelopment or rezoning. Of those eight people, I've got five people now that are for it. Okay? So everyone has their reasons and I've had suggestions. People say, I'd rather have more of the, the, what are they, eight plexes or whatever they are? I'd rather have less. I, you know, can we require fencing? Can we not require fencing? And, and so it's, there's a lot of conflict in there, but, but the fact of the matter is five out of eight have, have, because of the PUD and what that brings to them, have changed their position. And I'm gonna invite anybody that is either here or at home in the area, message me on Facebook or go in and send me an email, uh, at my city email address, which I don't know exactly what that is. Uh, you can get that on the webpage. I'd like to talk to you one-on-one because I think that's important to have that discussion. It's been very valuable. One of the questions to me today was what is the benefit of, there should be a benefit of the city allowing some use of the city land? Well, we can argue that one, debate that one a lot, but the fact of the matter is there is a benefit to the city. And if for some reason, by allowing that use of that 1.92 acres or whatever it is, if that brings a majority of the people that have had opposition to this before to where they, it is an acceptable plan for them and it, it enables the developer, to me, that's win-win. That's the tool, it's a tool that we have as the city to try to use in issues like this. And so if that works and if majority of those people that have been opposed to this before are now looking at it saying, I like this plan now, then there is a benefit to the city. It's not purely a giveaway. Okay? Although there are issues and I've got questions I need to get answered as well. But it's an attempt on our part to try to bring resolution to this because if we, if we vote this down, it's gonna come back at some point. And I keep hearing, when is this done? When is this done? When is this done? It's gonna come back. I mean, it, the likelihood of it being R2, it's possible, but it's highly probable it won't. And we're gonna hear it again. And then you're gonna have the same group of people or landowners here. So all I'm saying is, is that we need to keep an open mind on this. The PUD is a tool. There have been no decisions on that. Let's consider it because there are, there are some consequences that can come from not passing this. But I want to hear from as many of the people that are either for or against this as I can. I've really welcomed the, the conversations that I've had. They've been good conversations. So Mike, uh, Oddland, you have my cellphone number. If anybody contacts you, give them my cellphone number, please. Go on Facebook, message me. That's fine. I don't care. But I would like to talk to you if possible.
Other questions, comments? Randy?
You know, a lot, a lot of the questions been asked is, is it fair for the city to give the developer the land? Well, we're not actually giving the developer the land. We're working with the developer. Which we've did many a times. A lot of people say, well, you know, why do you give this guy this? And, and I know it's gonna be, we're not comparing apples to oranges. But I've seen us vacate land or vacate roads to work with the developer to better the community. I've seen, I'm gonna bring up Montgomery's deal. I know you, Mike, you're looking at me and you're gonna say it's not apples to oranges. It's the city working with tools to help better the community. And, and I know some of you guys might not agree with me. And Mayor, I don't know if I'm gonna be out of order or not, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. Mike, to defend the, the Plan Commission, you brought up the fact of the, the, uh, snow removal and snow storage. And why nobody brought that up? I didn't hear a single person from the audience oppose it neither. So why didn't you bring it up? That's all I got? But you never brought up that concern at that meeting.
Okay. Yeah. We
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So mine's gonna be a little bit longer. Uh, it's not necessarily questions, but, um, our job as the city council is to ask if this fits the requirements of the zoning designation in the area. So that's what we're trying to do. Historically, we've been anti-development and anti-change in Watertown. Not just this group, every group. Almost every single development since I've been around has been challenged in some way. The roundabouts have been challenged, the two-way streets going to, one-way streets going back to two-way were challenged. Pelican Development, City Hall, downtown buildings, almost every single one of them has had people against it. Stony Point, the Ice Arena. You could go on and on. It doesn't change. We're anti-change in this community. And it has affected a lot of things, including growth in this community because we don't have outside developers in, in this town. And we are affecting them coming to this town because we keep telling them no. I know it for a fact because I talk to them consistently. And I'm in that field. And it's difficult for us being here, let alone being from outside the community. And so we can argue because I went back and I don't know how many times, and I'm gonna call him Mike Tanner, not Mike Oddland right now, because he did attack us on the radio and accused us of things that weren't happening. He said numerous times throughout the multiple meetings that we're not anti-development. We don't, we just want R2. We want it to fit. We get that. That's why we want to hear that. But there were a lot of things that weren't true. And I'm gonna go through some of those because we try to make sound decisions for this community. And for this community, we base everything that we do on facts. Yet we have individuals in the media that continually attack us on just emotion and not those facts that we're basing it on.
Councilman, I'll just ask.
I have.
This, uh, this isn't.
Yep.
This isn't a personal.
I know. This is not personal towards Mike either.
You can argue the generalities of questions or concerns that were brought up without addressing a specific person in the audience.
Correct. And this is not just to Mike. I would just, there was only a couple of points.
So, and, but this is where we don't engage because we're not getting into a debate. We don't want that. So, but thank you, Councilman.
So the question is, does this fit the area? And that's the debate going on between everyone right now. The egg land provides a buffer and it coincides with the, the adjacent R3. So now that R3 was turned down, we go to this PUD. The PUD allows for an R, essentially an R2 in the southern half that coincides with the R2 in the eastern half and R3 in the, the northern half of the property. This is exactly what was discussed in previous meetings. And I've actually had two members of your neighborhood come up to me just this weekend that I saw during the St. Patrick's Day celebrations and said that they were no longer gonna fight it because this is exactly what they wanted. There was several times when we mentioned negotiations. And to quote one of those is, it said, they are showing a willing to negotiate. We are too as a neighborhood. As part of that, we delayed action for a month to see if there was negotiations between the landowners and the developers. And what was stated is they talked for an hour and they agreed to disagree because they wanted the character of the neighborhood. Also to quote it, it says, growth is good. We want R2. There was no negotiation. I can tell by the comments that were said. And frankly, I'm disappointed in that because that's why we delayed action for a month. It's because we wanted good faith negotiations between the developers and the landowners. So so based on 14th Avenue, we have to trust our staff telling us that there's not an issue. And it will be built out eventually when that northern part, that northern land gets developed. There's no question about that. It's just when. The city can't force that until it is developed. So I'm just, I'm trusting our staff and saying that that is not an issue. And I'm gonna say drainage was addressed several times in Plan Commission, maybe not during the PUD meeting, but previous meetings. And one of the council members actually asked Brandy on December 19th of 2022 about that drainage. And she clearly stated that the developers will need to meet all requirements for detention slash retention. In, in doing that, it will actually provide less runoff from that site into that drainage area. Because that's the requirements from the state. It has to be at or below the current runoff rate. So that's where I disagree that drainage was never addressed. Drainage has been addressed several time, several times, including in these council meetings. And the PUD was brought up. You're right. Um, and Heath did mention, mention it actually. It's just a way to aid the discussion, like our other council members have said in this. It's just another tool that we have in our toolbox. You know, no land is being given up. We are just using that as a tool to help it. And honestly, a PUD protects the neighborhood more than any zone, any other zoning requirement, even R1, because you know exactly what's going there and there's requirements set in place so they can't differ from it. So I just have a problem with what's going on right now because we are anti-change, not just this group again. We just are as a community. We have been for years and years. And it's sad to see because these developers have been gone well beyond what they've had to do to try to make this work. And that area being zoned R2 does not work. We've had several owners of that property try to make it work. It does not work financially. So if it, if it's not R2, like I think was it the mayor said, this will be back because it's gonna have to be rezoned at some point. And I'm not pleading with you guys. I'm just stating the facts. I, I re-watched every single meeting, um, including the Plan Commission meetings, and I took a lot of notes. I'm trying to get to the bottom of it. it, what's exactly going on. And I just, I don't like our City Council to be attacked through the media when there's misinformation out there. And I, I would urge you guys to do the same, because those meetings are online, and all the facts have been presented several times. So, thank you.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just actually, from my perspective here on this development, you know, this is a first reading, and I appreciate everyone that's speaking, everyone that's sharing pro, for, and against it. Actually, too, just, you know, going through this in the last couple of months, the communication, maybe we're not all on the same page yet as a city, or as residents, or as a developer. But the communication that is being had, and discussing, you know, developer with the residents, with the city staff, and with us here, I appreciate Councilman Danforth's comments on being, you know, your ward, and your availability, and willing to talk and work through this. So, the process, again, I'm just, I'm optimistic. I'm encouraged by the process that is taking place. And I guess, can emotions come into play, and, and maybe a bent in one direction or the other that we all may have on any given decision. So, but again, I am encouraged, because even if we do get off a little bit, even tonight, potentially, maybe in how we look or respond to something, it's, I think we're all working together in the big picture. So, I don't want that to get lost in the, in some of the challenges that we're having, because as a, as a whole, it's, I appreciate this, and I'm making my decision, and we, as we all are, based off data, based off of, like now, a PUD, based off what is being, you know, I voted against the R3, the first go-around, because I was voting for, you know, up to a 55-foot tall building, and that type of a project and that development, and I wasn't for that. I didn't see that as a good fit. Now, we're voting on a, on a PUD, that's, that's not that scope. And so, again, just the process that's gotten us here, I'm encouraged by, and I just, my, I'm hoping we continue to move forward in a, in a positive way.
Councilman Villauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions for probably Manager Hanton initially. Can you explain that the land that the city is, that's being utilized for the benefit of the PUD? What, what, what is happening, or what will happen to that land going forward? Let's, let's clarify that exactly, Brandy.
So, nothing, other than the, just the district that it's zoned will change. It will not be used for any development. And then, I guess the only thing that may change is the grading, so that there's a more, since they brought in fill to that land, that the private development land, they brought in fill so that they can raise that up. So, there may be some grading that would, that would create a more gradual slope, but nothing that will impact drainage.
Okay. As, as part of a PUD, our, because I had, I had a call last night, a question asked about protection from headlights that might be shining in their area. Is there required to be fencing? I know there's a tree, the tree buffering that will come into play eventually. Is there requirement for fencing to be around a PUD?
Not a PUD, but there is in the lighting and landscape ordinance, that parking lots that are abutting residential districts would be screened properly. So, for that reason, so that there would not be light pollution, when there's a open parking lot like that. Obviously, you're gonna get that when you have two single-family homes, and your neighbor pulls in the driveway at night, you're, they might shine headlights. But just because it's a, a greater amount of, of cars that would be in that part, in that off-street parking lot. So, we would make sure.
Okay. So, so in this case, what would, would our, would our landscaping and lighting requirements require, require a fence? Because there is some distance between the parking lot and the residential area.
Right. And it's not directly abutting. So, the areas that, that I could see would be over here on the east, because it's directly abutting. But then, they're not gonna be developing over there. So, it's not, it's not really adjacent. And there will be quite a bit of distance, you know, like almost a football field length, or in the, the developer had that exhibit showing those distances. But that's quite a bit of distance, that there should not be light pollution.
Okay. Just a comment, Councilman Danforth, you're referencing those that reached out to you, because that's your ward. I got the late, the Mansell calls, you got the, the Eastwoods calls. I only had, I only got one call directly relating to Eastwoods last night. And this was from a person who was opposed to the R3, that could now live with what was proposed under the PUD. And, and she's, well, asked me the question about the, the screening for light, you know, pollution. So, that's, that's the extent of what I, what I have heard directed, directly to me. As I look at that, I mean, we talked a lot about transitional zoning as we went through the R3 discussion. You know, we tried to put R1, R2, R3. Well, the R3 didn't quite cut it. Well, now, the way this PUD is laid out, that's exactly what we've got. Yes, the R2, it would require conditional use. I don't argue that. It would require a conditional use for the four-plexes that are being planned. But that's exactly what we've got here. It is R1, R2, and R3, and with the creek in between the R1 and R2. To me, this layout is for the protection of the neighborhood, and I can't see, I mean, I'm in favor of this. I was in favor of the R3 a few weeks ago. I look at this, and especially with the, the increased restrictions and covenants now that are in place with the PUD plan, that we did not have the assurance with under the R3 zoning. So, that's my comments relative to this tonight.
Thank you. Before I go for a second round of council comments and questions, I do have one, and so I wanna be fair and not wait until someone else. So, I apologize if this has been asked in one of the previous multiple public hearings, or almost public hearings on this point. But in regard to the A1 land that the city is using to make the PUD possible, I can understand the questions as far as the process go. Why don't we just sell it to them?
Do, go ahead, man.
Sure.
It's a drainage way that we have to maintain for city drainage purposes, and we want to retain control of that. It's not developable, is that a word? Developable land. So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense for us to, to sell that land to them.
But for the houses that are on the opposite side, that's okay, because I, and I have been up in that area, dealing with that Cherry Creek drainage issue, going back several years. And those backyards were very wet, and tough to mow. So, I, I'm not unsympathetic to the homeowners there, who maintained some of that land, and now the city is going to be doing it on the opposite side, a little bit. I can see where there's a little bit more of a buffer, but with the backyards to the drainage way. But I guess I'm just curious on that.
I get, what's the?
Well, is it just that the backyards, because people are only, I can see the, the end of the backyard property, and then there's land from the backyard to Cherry Creek. So, the people are not obligated to maintain that city-owned area, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, but, okay. So, I'm just wondering why we don't just sell up until the same area on the opposite side as we do on the homeowner's side. But obviously, that might be too much of a problem. Councilman Danforth, do you have a answer?
Maybe I can bring a little something into that one, and plus, I got a couple of questions procedurally here. But all of that land originally was acquired by the city, not for development purposes, not for a park. It was to maintain on a perpetual basis the watershed area there, or whatever the proper term is. The area that you're referring to, the Cherry, Cherry Drive side elevation, that's where the property was, ended that we bought. Plus, it's higher there. As you go to the, to the north and west here, that's the whole low land area. So, it was carved out when we bought that, all the way down to Third, I think it is, way down south. And it was really with the original intent of, of preserving the waterway. So, why not go more and sell it to them? Well, that's that low land area that we bought to protect. Okay? So, maybe that answers your question, maybe it doesn't. May I ask a couple of questions procedurally, if I can?
Yeah, that's allowable. City Attorney Carrico was going to address some procedural questions. But, go ahead.
One question that was asked to me, and I don't know the answer to this, and maybe nobody does, but why five acres for a PUD? I don't know that answer. You know, and one of my questions is, 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 there's a number of times that we, through the proper process, we issue variances. And so, my question is, is can we issue a variance on the acreage required for the PUD versus the allowance of the city land? In essence, that's what we're doing. Procedurally, it's not. But, so the question is, is why five acres? And is there ability to provide a variance on that land for the PUD versus going the direction we're going? Because if, if we can do that, then probably the proper procedure is for them to request a variance and forego the use of the city land.
So, I will allow that question, and I wanna make it clear, that this is the same route that we were down previously, when we got to where we are today, allowing a discussion on a PUD. This isn't, Councilman Danforth is not actively trying to broker a land deal. He is trying to understand what the council's powers are, and what our limitations are by ordinance. We aren't certain about that. We want to know. So, I guess, but I do believe that the question was asked about a five-acre one, but.
Correct. And I don't, I'm not sure that we can answer that this evening, but I'm taking notes that will get answered before April 3rd for you. I would say that I believe variances go to the Board of Adjustment, though. They would not come to this body for consideration.
Correct. And I can, on the five acres, I can give context of why or where we landed with that. So, that's just by ordinance. It's not state statute or whatnot. It's just the, what the community decided when we passed the PUD ordinance, that we would have a minimum district requirement of five acres. And I believe that that is largely to ensure that we're not getting small spot zones of somebody saying, "Well, I don't like the nine-foot setback here, the nine-foot side yard setback, so I'm gonna propose a PUD for my lot and have five feet." You know, just, just to try to limit the spot zoning aspect, I believe.
Thank you. Councilman Tupper?
So, now you just brought up another question for me, before I get into my other question. So, if whoever set the, you know, however far back they set the limit of five acres for a PUD, if at that time they would have set it at three acres, we wouldn't even be sitting here tonight, correct?
Well, we would.
It'd still be a PUD, but there wouldn't be the resistance of the.
City property.
City property.
Yep.
Okay. So, that was, five acres were set aside by somebody before this body. And you'll get us that information. I wanna also point out, and I sat on the council four years previous to this, now almost two years. And if anybody thinks they're not getting a fair shake at this, I've never seen so much put into a first reading. Normally, a first reading, there's no comments. I think the mayor did a excellent job of giving everybody the opportunity to speak. I've never seen a single issue that we've ever dealt with that, that we really, I don't even know if we've ever gave much comment on a first reading at all. So, for anybody that thinks that we're not giving them a fair shake on this, you guys have had a lot of opportunity. And, and I don't know of any other city council that would probably give everybody this much first reading. And, I mean, how many have we had? We went through rezoning how many times? Mr. Tanner, Oddland, excuse me, Oddland, I think I still pronounce it wrong, how many times you've been in front of this body over the last few years? So, it's been, it's been talked about a lot. So, I think, you know, we're being very, very fair, but we're still trying to make sure that what we do is, is right for the whole community. You know, we gotta look at, maybe as Councilman Paulson said, we have been anti-development for years. We gotta look, you know, here, as a whole body, we have to look at what's right for the whole community. And we're willing to listen to this portion of the community's complaints, and this portion of the community's complaints. The city still has to grow. And we need to look at what's right for the whole community and follow our rules. That's why the rules are set in place. And our rules do state that we can use our portion of the property into this five-acre PUD. So, I wanna thank the mayor for, other than making some long nights for us, but, and for you, for allowing this conversation, because it's all good input. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out to the residents still here, that I do care about this community and the, in this area. If you go back and look at the drainage letter that was sent to the original developers east of you, my name is on that letter. I know this drainage very, very well. And I was, I was the one that sent the initial letter saying you need to correct it, because it was built wrong. So, I don't want you to think that I'm just throwing anyone under the bus, or not care about you, because I do. I, I do care, and I know the drainage, and I know your concerns. So, I'm not discounting anyone's comments. I just wanna point that out, that my comments maybe, maybe came off wrong, but I know the drainage really well, and I do care. And I think it can be worked through.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, council?
I was just gonna say, one thing, I'm not exactly sure if I'm going to be bringing any possible amendments forward. I do have the same concerns that Councilman Villauer expressed about possibly putting up a fence to limit light exposure from the increase of parking going on there. I also would potentially pursue an idea that Mrs. Youngin proposed, which is, we could potentially force the PUD to bring in mature trees, so that they don't have to wait to be grown. You could potentially do that. And that's an idea that I, I just have to think about. I'm not sure that I wanna force that or not. But that would be something that I might bring back at the next time. I do have a question on 14th Avenue. I have had concerns about that, and I've said those before. But those concerns on 14th Avenue are not specific or unique to this development. They have been built up over a long time of mismanagement in northeast Watertown. And because there are truthfully roads and houses and expansion that have gone on up there, that truthfully should not have probably gone on without proper roadways built ahead of time. So, we are playing catch-up on that. But that has to be a question that I have to figure out, which is, do I draw the line at this development? Because the line could have, potentially should have been drawn years and years ago, before a lot of these houses even appeared up there, before the R2, before the R3, before the Watertown even grew out more to the east. We can't go back in time and change that, but we can deal with this. So, that's a question that I'm going to have to determine. I'm not even saying where I stand on that. What I will say is, this will come back. We all know it. This area is going to be developed. It's just a question of what's going to be there. I'm more inclined, probably like some of the people are, to deal with the PUD, because I can at least see, the comment was made earlier by, I think, not my good friend from council, from Ward A, but also others of us have said this on the other issues, on the zoning issues, is we don't really get another say on this, if we rezonate. With this, we actually do get a say. So, we have the ability now, again, not to negotiate a deal, but to set the covenants that we're agreeable to. I'm not exactly sure where I stand on the issue, but we've got two more weeks to figure that out. I do wanna say, I understand that tempers are hot on this. This is not the first time we've been down this road. This has been, if you wanna go back years, it's been more than a dozen. So, I can understand if tempers are short. I can understand that we all have differences of opinion, but I just want to say, to quote Abraham Lincoln, is, "We're not enemies, but friends. Though passions may have strained, they must not break the bonds of affection." So, we are still Watertown. We're all in it for Watertown. And sir, in the back, please be respectful of the proceedings. Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Attorney, Attorney Carrico?
First, I guess I would say, as I kind of elaborate on what the council has said tonight, please do not interpret that as the city attorney's office advocating or not advocating against a particular side. It's just my job to give kind of the parameters of, for a council as they move forward onto their second hearing, as to the comments that were, and actually, council did a very good job, I thought, of discussing those parameters, albeit in their own ways, differently. As to the six-month waiting period, I did have a discussion with staff about that. They had approached me and we discussed it and came to the conclusion that with the R3 and the various conditional use allowances for that, that it was substantially different than a PUD, which as the city manager and other council members have commented on tonight, is a set plan. So we are not in a situation of apples to apples, and you will not convince me otherwise. As to the council making decisions on city land, they have to. It's city land. They're the ones who have to decide whether, as some of the council has brought forward, as Tupper did, is, you know, variances, exchanging land, whether to include it in a PUD. They're not prohibited from including it in a PUD application. Therefore, they are the only body that can ultimately decide about the land. Staff makes its recommendations. It's no different. They make a recommendation of planning, planning that makes a recommendation to council with regard to zoning issues. So in that respect, as they have reiterated some stuff in the past, Brandy, if you could just give me a brief rundown on Sinclair and Bog.
Yes. So, gosh, two years ago, with the Sinclair Square development, the city, that whole area was rezoned from C3 to PUD, and that drainage way of Robey Creek that the city owns, part of that property was utilized and conveyed then to the private developer so that they were able to meet setbacks and then also utilize that land that otherwise the city had been using for access to really maintain Robey Creek. But we worked out a deal and, and so that it was able to still, Robey Creek can still be maintained and we can also encourage development and growth of unusable land. And then Bog Avenue is the property that was the old railroad grade, and so that property close to Lake Area Tech, Technical College, LATC, and the city traded that land for the Palace Apartments to make the, now the Ruins Project that's going on just to the east of Foundation Plaza, to see that redevelopment happen, and then also meet a housing need there along Bog Avenue in close proximity to LATC that does see a lot of growth. And so to have the housing, and our housing study in 2019 that we had done now, we are also updating that, stated that we would need around 1,200 units by 2030. And so, I probably have said this before, but, you know, when you think a perspective of, say, the Plains Apartments, each of those buildings, there's three, has 72 units, and when you're looking at an overall need of 1,200, you know, it takes quite a few projects to actually get us to that need. And, I mean, it's, it's great that we have the people growing our community and coming, coming here, and, and all of the businesses in LATC, everybody that's bringing this influx of people. But, yeah, it's also just a necessity that we, we do some creative things and be flexible within the parameters of the ordinance to, to see some of these projects through.
And then lastly, just as some of you may have been in council at that time, but if I remember, another colorful vacating was down by Little River City. That was a, a much heated proposal at that time as well. And again, it was, like I said, the council has the ability to decide what it does with its land. And what is presented before this council for next, the second reading, is whether this PUD plan fits within the community over in Northwoods, or Eastwoods, sorry.
Thank you. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to kind of expand a little bit on your last comment here. And one thing that's important is, as we enter the, the next phase of this, which would be the second reading, everything that may come up that might be considered as an option, that might be a requirement of the PUD or some change, there's going to be things that we haven't even talked about yet that are probably going to be mentioned two or three weeks from now, whenever that first meeting is. Because I will tell you that we have additional, individually, we have individual thoughts, but I'm going to guess I'm still going to get regular phone calls on this, and I welcome that. And I've had a lot of good information, good ideas shared with me. And so, those opportunities are going to come to us. And so, don't think because they haven't been discussed tonight, we're hiding something. That's not the case. They just come to light and through thought, additional thought, and through input from others. And I think that, that's going to happen when it comes to our next, second reading on this, which is normal. And those are things that we as a, as a council and in staff need to, to at least consider and do the whole spaghetti test, see what sticks, throw it on the wall and see what sticks. So, I just want to make sure that, that people understand because it hasn't been discussed tonight doesn't mean that additional things aren't going to be coming up because they will.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Thank you. Anything else on that, City Manager Mac?
I just have on my list, there were some questions about what could change with the city land if it's included in the PUD. What might the developers be able to do on that land if it's included? Why five acres? Can a variance be issued? When was the PUD ordinance adopted? My own question is, five acres is standard language across the state for cities that have PUD language, fencing potentials, mature trees, some notes about 14th Avenue. Did I miss anything that you all would like us to provide further information on? That's what we're here for. Anything else? Well, if anything else comes up, I mean, you can definitely call or email.
All right. Thank you. Sir, in the back of the room, I apologize for mentioning something. You were making a gesture while I was speaking and I took it offensively, and that was not something I should have done, but I do request respect from everyone in this room. That's us to you and you to us. So, I just want to make that clear going forward. We'll close item H, and I will kick off Old Business, as in one-year older business, and congratulate Chief Tim Toomey on being one-year older today. So, happy birthday. Any further Old Business? Councilman Tupper?
Where's the cake? Come on, chief, where's the cake? Oh, by the way, we brought cupcakes for your birthday.
Any further Old Business? Any New Business? Any Liaison Member Reports? Any announcements? Councilman Villauer?
Thank you. I received an email from Commission, County, Coddington County Commission Chairman Lee Gable this morning. I'm guessing probably everybody did, I'm not sure, inviting, it says, "Dear friends, I know this is short notice, but it was an unexpected opportunity. I think it'll be interesting and worthwhile. The presenter is a friend from Central Asia who served in the Soviet Army and has a perspective that many of us rarely get to hear firsthand. Please come if you can. Please share with those who might be interested. And this is a presentation at our, at our library at 7:00 tomorrow evening. A former Soviet Union military officer will present in what life would be like if the former Soviet Union was reunited." I promised Lee that I would pass this on.
Thank you very much. Any further announcements? City Manager Mac?
Mayor, I misspoke earlier when we were discussing the contribution for Coddington County Cares. I hope I get that, yeah, Watertown Cares, excuse me. I said it require a budget amendment, and really it's a budget supplement. So I'm sorry for that. Want to make sure that Kristen doesn't reprimand me later.
Thank you very much. Any further announcements? There is no reason to go into executive session tonight, therefore the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night and God bless you, Watertown.